Everyone, please rise for the fudge. Thank you. I will make just a couple of announcements. The board met in executive session for thirty minutes prior to things board meeting. And I'd like to explain how the public comment period is going to work. We've made a couple of adjustments to allow as many people as possible to speak. And we do have a lot of people here this evening, and we also received a lot of comments through the online Survey Monkey. So we're asking everyone to do their very best to please keep their remarks to three minutes, if at all possible. Mr. Fairchild, who's up in the sound booth, Dr. Fairchild, excuse me, will cut folks off at five minutes. But we're really hoping that in the interest of letting the maximum number of people, that people will be able to confine their remarks to five minutes. People in the room who would like to speak should fill out one of the yellow cards. I see folks are already doing that. And be ready to hand it to one of the principals at the microphone. You must provide your full address on the card, but you do not need to announce it when you speak. We would appreciate it if you would say your name, so we know who you are. Please also note that only residents of the Lewisburg area school district are invited to participate public comment period. I would like to correct some misconceptions in case anyone planned to disclose. First, prior to our last meeting, we were already planning to bring a revised health and safety plan to this meeting, largely due to the concerns about contact tracing that Dr. Baugh will describe. Second, the proposed plan on tonight's agenda was developed by Dr. Baugh in consultation with the administrative team, representatives of the LAEA and the nurses. According to policy nine oh three on public comment, public comment is restricted to thirty minutes. However, I will now ask for a motion to extend the period for public comment on agenda items to six minutes. Go move. Second. Is there any discussion? Bring none? A voice vote, please. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That extends the public comment period to six. We will begin the public comment period with the first comment that was submitted online. Dr. Fairchild will be reading those from above. And we ask folks in the room who would like to speak to form lines, there's a microphone in each aisle. And we'll go back and forth between the online comments and the in-the-room comments. And again, I beg you to please try to stick with two minutes to make time for everybody who wants to speak. Dr. Fairchild?
Certainly. Our first comment this evening comes from Jessica Oberlin. I am asking that the board keep their plan in place for universal masking indoors until the later review of April nineteenth to revisit this topic. Our district has been able to stay in-person learning because of this measured approach, and we parents want to keep it this way through the winter COVID surges that are still affecting our local communities and hospitals. To take away masking now is to welcome more students becoming ill, more being sent home, potential remote learning, and ultimately hurting the educational situations for our children. We working parents also cannot afford to take more time off because some simply do not want to mask any longer. Masking is a small effort with a large impact for our district to keep in-person learning for the remainder of the school year. Do not cut us off short now by removing masks.
Thank you. I would invite the first person in the room who would like to speak.
Hi, my name's Dave Jacobson. I support the masking policy. I support listening to scientists. And a majority of scientists believe and have shown that masking is effective. And I thank you for taking care of our kids. I know that our, the health and safety of our kids is most important, and masking is a part of that. It's been proven to be effective at stopping the spread of COVID. And I support masking as long as scientists recommend it. And I would encourage you to listen to scientists and not to politicians or other commentators. Thank you.
Thank you. Next online comment?
Yep. Our next online comment comes from Kevin Willie. First of all, thank you all for what you've done to date to keep our kids safe and in school. Now is not the time to change the approach that is working, as evidenced by the periods of remote learning that we've seen in nearby districts. What LASD is doing is working. For the sake of our kids' physical and emotional well-being and the safety of the teachers who are our neighbors, please maintain the existing masking requirement and other elements of the health and safety plan through the end of the school year.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jessica Hess, resident of the district. Good evening, school board members, students, families, and district residents. I thank you for this time for us to come together and consider what is best for our students and school communities as we move forward through this academic year and beyond. First, I'd like to thank the school leadership for all of your efforts as we've navigated the pandemic and tried to ensure the safety of our students and educators with the importance of face-to-face instruction and co-curricular involvement. I know that through the past couple of academic cycles and more recently, there have been important discussions about quarantining, contract tracing, and masking, among other things related to the COVID-19 pandemic. I was able to review the last board meeting and know that the LASD community members of all positions have already shared concerns about classroom disruption, instructional time lapses, staff time prioritization, medical recommendations, et cetera. With my brief time here, I would like to share from two different angles that I feel I am able to that might provide additional insight to this discourse and future decisions by the board and district. As a higher education professional for over twenty years, who is currently serving at a college and active in several national organizations, boards, and advisories, I can assert confidently that over the past year and a half, colleges and universities are facing a number of new challenges with students matriculating to our institutions. Many of these have been heightened and/or caused by things associated with the pandemic and the educational experiences that students are having in high school, many of which we anticipate will continue to grow the longer that K through twelve traditional education is disrupted and manipulated due to decisions and practices implemented such as masking, quarantining, and changes in educational format. Knowing that others will focus on major disadvantages with absenteeism due to contact tracing and quarantining, in regards to the main terms to be reviewed in our health and safety plan moving forward, I'd like to focus on masking. Please reconsider the effects on specific populations that are often the most vulnerable and disadvantaged, such as English language learners, non-native English speakers, students with sensory challenges, students who are hearing impaired, students with cognitive and/or other disabilities and limitations. For some of these students and others who might be from a different cultural and socioeconomic background, the concept of vaccinations and other healthcare and wellness-related concepts are often very different from those that we may have and can cause, in some cases, students and families even more so feeling that they do not fit into our community, creating a larger social and cultural divide, in turn affecting a student's ability to connect and learn within our classrooms. And in general, please consider the effects for any student in regards to social cues, confidence in responding during classroom discussion, confidence in social interactions with peers, educators, coaches, and other administrators, ability to communicate and generally interact cross-generationally and cross-culturally, et cetera, socio-emotional health, mental health, including anxiety and social anxiety, general masking fatigue, general pandemic fatigue. Obviously, I'm highlighting these as they relate to a learning environment both at the high school K through twelve and transitioning into the collegiate level. We, higher education institutions, are already seeing the effects. More personally, I'd like to address the unclarity of policies both in previous health and safety, both in the previous health and safety plan as well as the newly proposed plan. As you may know, we have three children in the district, all in the high school, and our youngest son had two different instances where he was targeted for not having a mask on after the school day. One of these instances I was present for, excuse me, where a teacher approached him at practice at the middle school and told him to put his mask on repeatedly, where he respectfully shared that he was at practice and understood that he didn't have to wear one. The teacher did not realize that I was there, as I also had workout clothes on and a mask. And she repeatedly spoke to him firmly about this requirement to wear a mask. And finally, I did speak up and question the rule as documented was that masking was not required after school hours during co-curricular and extracurricular activities. She then acknowledged my presence and point, gave her recommendation once more for him to wear one. I thanked her, and she continued to leave the school as she was going home at the conclusion of her day. I feel as though if I were not there, it would have been a very different interaction.
Thirty seconds.
The second occasion, he was by himself at the high school and almost faced disciplinary repercussions. But again, we were able to have a conversation with administrators and come to an understanding based on the fact that the last documentation was unclear and no rules had actually been violated as been written. In reviewing the new proposed plan, it seems like there is still ambiguous language such as recommended and should, which are two very different assertions. I ask that you, at your convenience, reference the fifth bullet point under the universal incorrect wearing of masks. Thank you.
Thank you. Next online comment?
Our next. Our next online comment comes from Sarah Kelly. I strongly urge the board to continue the current health and safety policy, including mandatory masking for all students and staff. Our county is still in high transmission, and we in Lewisburg are lucky that we have not had to go remote. I'm sure this is because of taking the precaution of masking at school. In my family, we are worried about exposing an elderly family member who has an underlying lung disease. Just because my child is unlikely to die from COVID does not mean she couldn't bring it to her grandmother. I also worry about the stress on teachers who are having to cover multiple classes when other teachers are out sick or exposed because there aren't substitutes. That affects our students. Please, let's protect our whole community by keeping this policy in place.
Thank you.
Hello, Tara Michaels, and I want to start out, thank you to Dr. Baugh for proposing the update to the plan and most specifically eliminating the quarantine of asymptomatic contact-traced students and to the board for discussing this now instead of waiting until April. As mentioned at the last meeting, people were reaching out to me and others. So in an effort to organize and collect their opinions, we created a form. Here is what we found from the two hundred and twenty-seven respondents. If you're interested in reviewing the whole results, you can find them at bit.ly forward slash survey results for LASD, and that's all lowercase, survey results for LASD. Should the district eliminate quarantine of students who are contact-traced but are asymptomatic? Two hundred and fourteen of the two hundred and twenty-seven said yes. Should the district eliminate contact tracing? Two hundred of the two hundred and twenty-seven said yes. Should the district make masking optional? Two hundred and fifteen of the two hundred and twenty-seven said yes. A hundred percent of the students, faculty, and staff who commented said yes. A hundred and four of the hundred and thirteen parents who responded also said yes. Here are some of the comments we received. This one is from a local doctor who gave me permission to use his name, but I'm not going to in fear of judgment from those who may disagree with him. In reference to masking, we should be focusing our efforts to protect the most vulnerable. If a parent and student feel vulnerable, they should be allowed to mask, but should seriously consider using an approved N95 that is sized and professionally fit-tested for the individual. But those are not, excuse me, but those are not vulnerable should have a choice. Besides, the cloth masks have no benefit. Contact tracing, there is clear scientific evidence that contact tracing has no benefit at this stage of the endemic. Our schools should be spending their time and energy not to manage, not to mention my taxpayer dollars, teaching my child and get out of the healthcare business. A high school parent, students who are contact-traced are falling behind in school. Since kids are being forced to wear a mask in school, they are supposedly being protected from catching and spreading COVID. If the masks are preventing the spread, then why should kids with no symptoms be able to attend school, not be able to attend school? Teacher at Kelly Elementary, there is a high vaccination rate as well as natural immunity at this point. Why are mental health, normal communication with the ability to read facial expression, and personal choice not a priority? Teacher at Kelly, covering the face of young children and their teachers impairs learning. Children need to see teachers' mouths in order to learn how to correctly form sounds. Take for one example, trying to differentiate for kindergartners the voiced versus unvoiced "th" sound with a mask on. Or, or any sound for that matter. Phonemic and phonological awareness cannot, in my opinion, be effectively taught without children seeing a teacher's mouth to form sounds. A parent at Kelly, I have students in both Lewisburg and Meadowbrook. They have very different masking and quarantine policies, yet the COVID numbers have remained the same between both schools. We see no difference in COVID numbers, yet our students at Meadowbrook are happier, more focused on school, not talking about COVID, but more on academics, have far less fear, and not feel discriminated against based on vaccination or not. I hope, based on the LSD fam, LASD family, staff, and faculty that you know support you, you will approve what Dr. Baugh has recommended and will consider reevaluating making masking optional at a sooner date. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next online comment comes from Michael James. Dear school board, I am writing to strongly recommend that you retain the universal masking requirement put in place with the health and safety plan. With Omicron, the level of COVID transmission has skyrocketed, and hospitalization and death rates have risen substantially as well. Hence, now is not the time to relax on masking, and it makes sense to maintain the masking requirement until April nineteenth to provide ample time for COVID levels to decline. In addition, I should note that Milton area schools, which did not have a universal masking requirement, had to go remote for several days due to high levels of COVID transmission. Lewisburg, on the other hand, was able to remain in person largely because our masking provision helped to keep levels of infection much lower than in Milton. If we want to retain in-person education, which is best for our students and for our economic productivity, we must maintain universal masking in our schools.
Thank you. Next person, comment?
Hello, my name is Jeanette Bergy. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today in support of the revised health and safety plan. I'm here to speak specifically in support of the elimination of contact tracing as well as the removal of the mask mandate over our students and staff. I understand that the circumstances we are facing in this world in, that we live in, have made decision-making very difficult for the school board and administration. Although many would say that there was a time and need for contact tracing and masking, it is time to bring it to an end. If we accept that masking cannot stay in school forever, we have to decide when is the right time to remove them, and I strongly believe at that time is now. The CDC director reported that children ages five to seventeen had only an eleven thousandth of a percent chance of being hospitalized due to COVID. This number included children who went to the hospital for something other than COVID but happened to test positive during their hospital stay. To put things into perspective, a pedestrian is twice as likely to get hit by a car while crossing the street. The survival rate among American children with confirmed cases is approximately ninety-nine point nine percent. Remarkably, recent studies find an even higher survival rate. This year, my eighth-grade student was contact-traced on two different occasions. Each time, she was asked to stay home because she was unvaccinated. As a result, my daughter was robbed of in-person instructional learning simply because our family chose not to vaccinate our children at this time. In each of these instances, my daughter was expected to submit the same amount of work as her vaccinated peers with no extended due dates or assignment modifications. Although I am speaking from my own personal experience, I know that my child is not the only one negatively affected by contact tracing. The Lewisburg area school district's vision statement states that they are in pursuit of excellence and equity for their students. By requiring unvaccinated students to miss out on in-person instructional learning times simply because they might get sick is not pursuing excellence and certainly not equity. By this point, we can assume that all students have been exposed at one time or another, whether at a sporting event, a grocery store, or even in an after-school activity. Our bodies are starting to develop the natural immunities it has been created to have, also proving to be the most effective form of protection against infection. In addition to the removal of contract tracing, I'm in support of removing the mask mandate in schools, allowing masks to be optional. There comes a point when we need to evaluate if the reduction in risk that comes from the mask is balanced or begins to be outweighed by the detrimental side effects that come from masking. Learning specialists and speech pathologists across the country agree that our youngest students are experiencing language acquisition and difficulties in pronunciation. Students are experiencing acne and other dermatological infections on their faces, adding to low self-esteem and depression. Before, masking was seen as I protect you and you protect me. However, the most recently revised health safety plan provides students living in fear to use N95 masks, which are proven to be the most effective in protecting oneself from contracting diseases. This option allows individuals to take responsibility and freedom over their own health and protection. Although the school board, administrators, and teachers have made a significant effort to protect our children, this pandemic has left us chasing the wind, reaching for anything and everything simply to appease those who are in fear. It is with this that I say, the timing to remove contract tracing and masking mandates begins now. Thank you.
Our next comment comes from Sarah Bell. As a parent of a 2021 graduate and community member, I very much appreciate the thoughtful and deliberate efforts of the school board and administration to obtain and follow the safest scientifically-based protocols within federal and state policies while also balancing the needs of our students, staff, and community as best you can during a very difficult time. From what I understand, this plan is to remain in place until the transmission is no longer defined as high. Given the high transmission we have been seeing in our community and its impacts on school staffing and hospitals, pressure from parents should not be a reason to change your policy and protocols. While I realize it is not easy to wear masks, and I am tired of it myself, it is an important safeguard towards preventing the transmission of the virus so we can keep students and staff in the school and continue fostering a learning environment that is as safe as it can be. I just read that the Canadian women's hockey team wore masks throughout their games at the Olympics, which is a great example of what can be done effectively out of concern for the health of those involved. Thank you for all you are doing, especially at this time when emotions are high and information is not always clear.
Thank you. Next person in the room who would like to comment?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me this time to speak. My name is Zachary Engel, and I'm a sophomore here at Lewisburg Area High School. Over the last two years, there have been many changes we as students and teachers have adjusted into our daily lives. From the beginning, we didn't know what to expect, and we lived through many safety measures in virtual learning. Today, we now know an incredible amount of information on ways to be safe in the deal with the continuing virus. This is the main reason I have decided to present this speech, so I can bring a perspective from the daily life of not just me, but many of my peers. There are many downsides to quarantining students and teachers. Most cases, students and teachers have already removed themselves from school environment due to being sick and using a more common sense practice than in years past. What I see is by the time the test is received, by this time, the student or teacher, most cases it's already been five days, and their symptoms are clear and they're able to return back to school. Then this sets up close contact tracing. Now, students and teachers that have been close to this subject or determined close via camera or guessing assumptions that teachers say based on what they think or who they were around. Not to mention, if you're vaccinated, now you're okay to stay at school. Science, as this is what everyone seems to be following, now makes that sending non-vaccinated students home and sending vaccinated students back into the classroom. It's probably worst-case scenario as we know today. We now know that being vaccinated boosted and boosted again, you are still able to contract COVID. It's time that we get back to normal. Sending a bus full of kids home from one person that is sick. Miss school is a significant issue for students, their families, and their teachers. This is especially true as many teachers and students have lots of work to make up after being quarantined. And I personally seen my grades be affected by virtual learning. Evidence comes simply from the fact that spreading in schools is very limited. This is something we knew from data last year, a paper base from New York, for example, showed that among thirty-six thousand children quarantined for being close contacts, only one hundred and ninety-one of them ended up with COVID. This is less than what influenza has impacted the same-age community in the years past statistics. With these numbers I just mentioned, another thing to justify is recent studies from Greece and Italy found evidence that masking is a barrier to speech recognition, hearing, communication, and that masks impede children's ability to make out facial expressions. And it also dampens children's trustworthiness of faces. Research has also suggested that hearing-impaired children have difficulty making out individual sounds as masking dampens higher-frequency pitches in making a similar sound alike, similarly, similar wording sound alike. They also learned that most hearing-impaired kids are better at lip reading, but the masks prevent this. Some teachers and parents have reported that masks can make learning difficult for some of America's most vulnerable children, including those with speech and hearing issues, along with autistic students. This fall, when children were asked, many said that mask-wearing is uncomfortable and they dislike it. My opinion is, if your mask works and you feel safe with it, then wear it. But let's not use this subject as fear tactic and punish our students for something that we see science say truly doesn't protect you from catching. Again, wear a mask if you want. I'm not going to look at anyone different because they chose to wear one or not. But for myself, where I know my likelihood of catching the virus and getting sick is possible and more likely going to happen at some point. But I also see the science of cases with me getting extremely sick is so rare that my odds of getting struck by lightning is high. What I do see is that after two forty, COVID goes away. I often see teachers and staff after school hours in grocery stores and throughout town as they preach to wear a mask, but I guess that's the only thing during school hours. Just a small taste of hypocritical lifestyle and forcing me into something from seven thirty till two forty PM. I have friends from many other schools around us and their schools
Thirty seconds.
and their schools have stopped close contact tracing and masking. Thanks again for allowing me this time to share my thoughts, to hear what I had to say.
Thank you.
Our next online comment comes from Karen Shavill. She writes, please keep the current health plan in place. Masking works.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you this evening. My name is Jonah Carney, and I'm a junior. And I'm very grateful for the education and opportunities I have received at Lewisburg. I went online to look at the LASD vision statement and commitment. The vision highlights the pursuit of equity and excellence. Our commitment promises to treat everyone with dignity and respect and to increase the achievement of all students while closing gaps that currently exist. Unfortunately, for the last two years, not everyone has experienced that. No one can help that we've experienced COVID, but we can help how we deal with, deal with it. Excuse me. I have friends who aren't vaccinated, and although they didn't have COVID, many were contact-traced because they may or may not have been seated by someone who tested positive. They were notified, then had to miss school and activities for a few days. They never tested positive, but in quarantine, they couldn't interact with anyone and stressed about playing catch-up for a virus they didn't have. I believe this creates gaps and is not equity. Many of my friends and I are vaccinated, and we are all still wearing masks. Some wear two masks, some wear N95s and a cloth mask, and many still got COVID. Wearing masks was to be a temporary occurrence because we didn't want anyone to get COVID. It's the right thing to do. My mask protects you, your mask protects me. Then we were told, get the vaccine, you won't have to wear masks, and all will go back to normal. But the masks still remain. The masks that were to help us from getting COVID are actually hindering us and creating problems that could last longer than the pandemic itself. Masks make it challenging to communicate. In class, I can't see facial expressions of my teachers and peers. I spend a lot of time trying to decipher muffled sentences while straining to listen. There's more to communication than the words we say. Our body language and facial expressions play a large role in how we communicate. I've heard some friends say, I'm a quiet person, and I know the mask will muffle my voice. The people I'm talking to will have a hard time understanding me, so I don't talk in class. As a reserved, sometimes quiet person, I can relate to this. It's easier for many to stay quiet and hide behind masks. We are already in a generation who struggles with in-person communication, glued to our phones, talking through text. When we're finally without our phones and we see our peers, our faces are covered. I'm a link crew leader, and while trying to get to know my freshmen, I sometimes take them snacks during their flex period, but it's but it's hard because I don't really know what they look like. I thought I saw one of my freshmen at Giant, but I wasn't sure because in school I can only see his eyes. The masks make it harder to develop meaningful relationships and make it harder to learn. I'm asking for you to vote in favor of the changes to the health and safety plan proposed by Dr. Baugh, with one exception, that mask wearing be recommended and not required effective immediately. In Pennsylvania, each school can remove mask mandates. I'm asking you to use that authority. For the sake of your student body, I believe it's time. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Our next online comment comes from Wendy McTamoney. Dear school board members, I am writing to you as a parent of a senior and sophomore at LAHS, healthcare worker, and member of the Lewisburg community regarding the current health and safety plan in the LASD. It has come to my attention that a small group of people spoke up at the last meeting against masking in the schools. I want to make it clear that there are people who feel that masking in our district has been an important part of keeping our children safe during this school year. We have managed to stay in person and when vaccinated, students who are contact traced are not missing school due to the use of masks. Masking has served to make regular school attendance and consistent in-person school a reality in the LASD. Without masking, I feel that this would not be the case. The health and safety plan in its current iteration is working well and should not be amended at this time. Thank you for your continued dedication to the health and welfare of our children.
Thank you. Next person comment?
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak here tonight. Hello, my name is Carter Hoover and I'm a senior here at the high school. I would like to encourage the board to support the elimination of contact tracing. This process discriminates against unvaccinated students and forces them to miss school, even though we all know vaccinated people can still get and transmit COVID. I would also like to ask the school board to consider allowing masking to be optional in the school district as soon as possible. It has been very frustrating to be forced to wear a mask since the governor's mandate was ruled unconstitutional. This view is shared by many of my fellow classmates. It is especially frustrating to see many of the surrounding school districts go mask optional, allowing for students and their families to choose what is best for them in order to create the best environment for learning. Forcing students to wear masks can only dampen relationships between students and staffs as students may sometimes become angry with teachers for enforcing the rule about proper masking rather than with those who established it. This interaction also leads to frustration for the staff. Teachers should be able to focus on educating students instead of focusing on enforcing proper mask wearing. Additionally, I, along with many other classmates, were vaccinated in expectation that in doing so, we would not have to wear masks. Now, however, it is even more frustrating as I am still vaccinated and feel safe because of it, but I'm still being forced to wear a mask. Optional masking would allow for students who still feel they are at risk to wear a mask in order to protect themselves. It would also allow those who already feel safe due to their vaccination status, the age group in which they are in, or whatever reason they personally have, not be forced to wear a mask. In a recent article from the Western Journal, Dr. Rubin, who is the director of the Policy Lab at Children's Hospital of Philadelphia, has suggested that it is finally time to start getting back to normal in the school setting, particularly since cases of the COVID-19 Omicron variant among children are more on the level of other seasonal viruses. He also suggests that it is fine to keep mask recommendations in school, but not requirements, as well as recognizing that masking choices have to return to families. It is very important to get things back to normal for students, for their mental health, and to create the best environment for learning. Forcing us to wear masks does not do that. It is very easy to become disengaged in the classroom when you can't see the facial expressions of your classmates and teachers. Because I'm a senior, most of my teachers have seen me before COVID and at least remember what I looked like. But teachers have never seen the faces of the freshmen and sophomores. That makes it very hard to build connections with each other. I'm also very grateful for the opportunities that I've had in sports where I can build positive connections with my teammates and coaches, but not all of my classmates have those opportunities. Me and many others would like to go to school in a way that best lets us learn in an environment with the most normal settings. However, steps have to be taken in order to do so. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share my thoughts.
Thank you.
Thirty minutes of the comment period have expired. Thirty minutes remain. Next online comment comes from Sue Ellen Fuerstein. She writes, please maintain the current masking policy and other COVID protocols. We have not gone remote this year and as a working parent, I need the schools to stay open. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment?
I'm gonna have to lower this. I'm Sherri Jacobson. I live in Union Township. I'm a parent of a senior in the high school and also an alum, an alumnus from 2019. I am here to speak in favor of keeping our mask mandate. I think if we are going to change the policy about contact tracing and quarantining, it doesn't make sense to also eliminate the mask mandate at the same time. As a social scientist, I would say you tweak one thing and see what happens. And if things look good, then you can try tweaking something else. But if you tweak two things at the same time, you're not going to know what caused what. And if things don't go well, then we're not going to know why. So I would say, you know, there should be a graduated change in practices, not changing more than one thing at a time. I would also say that our county currently has a 56% vaccination rate and an 18% test positivity rate. I think we should be watching those numbers to make decisions about changing policies. I get the frustration. I wear a mask all day long at work. It's challenging. It is challenging to get to know my students' faces and all of that. But our priorities have to be keeping people safe and healthy and keeping our school open. And so what audit trigger changes should be, you know, what's the vaccination rate? What's the test positivity rate? And then only one thing at a time should be changed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next online comment comes from Lauren Peck. As an LASD parent and staff member, I am imploring the board to keep the health and safety plan exactly as it is from its last update on December 16th, 2021. Our community COVID transmission rates have never been higher than they are right now, so why would we remove any mitigation efforts at this time? Unlike Milton, Danville, and Line Mountain, LASD has never had to go virtual this year because of COVID. We can attribute that to one health and safety factor our current board created that others did not, mandatory masking. Should you choose to remove a mask requirement, we open our schools to unchecked community spread and we put everyone's health at risk. We also compromise our ability to staff our buildings, something we are already struggling to do. Please consider the health of your staff members, district children, and their families, many of whom have health risk factors you know nothing about, and keep masking as a requirement in LASD.
Thank you. Next comment?
I wanted to start by thanking the school board and administration for allowing students to have the opportunity to speak today. My name is Haley Bergy. I am a senior here at Lewisburg Area High School and I'm actively actively involved in Color Guard, a lead in our upcoming musical Les Mis, and one of Lewisburg's PMEA All-State Vocalists. As a student directly affected by these mandates, I am here in support of the recently revised healthcare safety plan and would like to share my experience. As most teens, I have been suffering the effects of quote-unquote maskne. This is acne caused by dirt and bacteria caught in the fabrics of masks that then get trapped in your facial pores. Due to wearing a mask for approximately seven hours during the school day, plus another three to four hours for musical practices, this was inevitable, despite wearing a clean mask every day. Although this may just seem like an insignificant cosmetic inconvenience, for me, it has been hating the sight of my face, causing me to have significantly lower self-esteem. A person's self-confidence will have a tremendous effect on their productivity and overall happiness. This is not just true for me, but for my fellow classmates and peers as well. According to epidemiologist Michael Osterholm, who served on President Biden's transition team, the COVID Task Force, many of the face cloth coverings that people wear are not very effective in reducing any of the virus movement in or out. If this is the case, then why are we still wearing masks? Two years into this pandemic, almost all students have either had COVID, giving them natural immunity, or have been vaccinated. What started off as preventative preventive measures is no longer needed to protect. After graduation, I hope to continue my musical studies and one of my greatest concerns is vocal health. I have already started to experience vocal effects of masking. Masks can greatly damage your vocal cords. The fabrics and coverings muffle the natural sounds you make when speaking. This causes people to have to speak louder volumes than their voices are accustomed to produce. Speech pathologists explain that a mask takes away five to 20 decimals. Essentially, anyone on a daily basis wearing a mask have to exert their voice 25 to 50% more than they typically would. Not only do vocalists accumulate this damage due to basic communication, but singing as well. Choir members and musical participants participants sing approximately two to three hours a day, five days out of the week for school functions alone. If done safely and correctly, this should not have much impact on vocal health. However, the masking requirements and restricts the masking requirements restrict the oxygen intake needed to maintain good vocal health. Let me help you visualize what this looks like for vocal students. Each time we inhale, the mask enters our mouth, sealing the opening of our mouth, preventing the amount of oxygen needed to produce the desired tone, causing us to force the sound out. This can lead to long-term damage on our vocal cords, which can be detrimental for students who are pursuing music as a long-term career. Since the start of mandatory mandatory masking, students have been told that masks are required in order to keep everyone safe from the COVID-19 infection. Masks started as a temporary solution, but we are now two years into this pandemic. It's time to allow our students and faculty members to breathe again. Thank you.
Our next online comment comes from Becky Perez. She writes, LASD COVID policies to date have been effective, resulting in fewer sick children and teachers and in fewer case-driven shifts to virtual-only learning. While wearing masks indoors can affect interpersonal communication and teaching, it is a far superior option compared to the disruption of shifting from in-person to virtual-only classes for both students and their working parents, who must make arrangement for unanticipated supervision of children. LASD's policies should emphasize classroom experience consistency and stability over the remainder of the spring semester. We recognize that due to vaccinations and past community cases, current COVID case incidents and its effect on our daily lives is improving. We all long to fully return to normal. Continuing with indoor masking in classrooms is our best strategy to start the fall semester unencumbered.
Thank you. Next comment?
Thank you for your time. My name is Dr. Brad Confer and I'm reading this letter that we sent to you all last night on behalf of my wife, Elizabeth Confer. My wife and I have been supportive of school masking during the beginning of the pandemic to help decrease transmission rate, keep children safe due to many unknown factors with regards to COVID-19, and ensure children are in schools as much as possible. We know there have been struggles along the way, but our school-aged children look forward to be in person every day. As the pandemic drags on and the scientific knowledge regarding COVID-19 emerges, it is time to revisit the need for contact tracing and universal masking in schools. We compiled some of the most recent literature regarding these topics and asked the LASD school board to use this information in considering discontinuing contact tracing and leaving the decision regarding masking to parents who have the best interest of their children's learning needs as well as their inherent medical risk. Before we present the scientific literature, it is important to note that many of America's peer nations around the world, including the UK, Ireland, all of Scandinavia, France, the Netherlands, Switzerland, and Italy, have exempt children with varying age cutoffs from wearing masks in classrooms. Conspiciously, there's no evidence of more outbreaks in schools in these countries relative to schools in the US. These countries, along with the World Health Organization, whose child mask guidance differs substantially from the Center for Disease Control's recommendations, have explicitly recognized that the decision to mask students carries with it potential academic and social harms for children and may lack a clear benefit. It's also worth noting that increasing numbers of the opposite editorial page op-ed columns from respected physicians or columnists quoting respected physicians in regard to universal masking. And I've included those citations in the email we sent to you. Some of them are from the New York Times and the Wall Street Journal. These op-ed recommendations by the WHO, along with the increasing number of op-eds, motivated us to do our own research regarding quarantine and close contacts and the need for universal masking. We first wanted to understand contact tracing and the risk of COVID transmission in the school setting. One study in North Carolina was over a nine-week period and included 11 participating school districts that had greater than 90,000 students and staff attend school in person. Through contract tracing, health department staff determined only an additional 32 infections were acquired within school. In other words, there were 4,500,000 student days and only 32 cases of COVID were acquired in school. It's important to note that this was in peer-reviewed data published in the respected journal of pediatrics. The North Carolina school study shows the overall spread of COVID in school setting is low. So the next question is what about the risk of developing transmitting COVID from a close contact? During September of 2020 and October 31st, 2021, the Los Angeles County Public Schools evaluated a test-to-state program. It's important to note that in both the test-to-state and in the non-test-to-state group, the risk of close contact turning positive for COVID was 1.3% and 0.7%. That's not statistically significant, but it's also important to note in the group that had to quarantine, they missed 92,455 in-person school days. In the largest study to date published in the peer-reviewed British Medical Journal, Lancet, investigators looked at both traditional quarantine of close contacts and those in treatment group, which consisted of routine PCR testing of close contacts to stay in school. In both groups, 2% of close contacts tested positive. It's important to note that part of this study was conducted during a time period where masking was optional in school. All these studies demonstrate that school-acquired infection rate is low and the risk of close contacts developing COVID is less than 2%. The next question we ask is what is the virulence of COVID-19, specifically the Omicron variant, which is the predominant variant circulating in the United States, specifically looking at pediatric populations? The largest study that's currently under peer review that evaluated 14,054 patients with Omicron, of these, 27.7% were pediatric patients. And it's important to note, I'll just kind of summarize and say that risk of hospitalizations, risk of need for ventilation, risk of ER visits was cut 50% from what the Delta variant was. The data is particularly striking for the pediatric cohort and that only 1.5% of the population between the ages of five and 18 required hospitalization. Importantly, the majority of these hospitalizations in the cohort were for reasons other than COVID-19. In a subsection of that study, that's again under current peer review, the data was also similar for children under the age of five years old. The overall risk to healthy children is minimal from these studies. Finally, we must investigate the data on masking in schools. As reported in August 28th, 2021, Wall Street Journal op-ed by Dr. Margaret McCary and Dr. H. Cody Mizer, the CDC has changed their guidance and now noted that the class masks are ineffective in preventing the spread of Omicron variant. Recently, it's become evident that class masks do not decrease transmission of the Omicron variant. The CDC's response is to use an N95 or KN95. This is not realistic and necessary for every student. In my profession, I perform aerosol generating endospies every day and my employer deemed that an N95 or KN95 is not necessary for routine cases in the absence of COVID-positive patient. I agree with them and have felt safe every day of the pandemic with my surgical mask. Why then will we require our children to wear an N95 or KN95? It also begs the question if the masks are doing any harm. A recent study demonstrated the detrimental effects of children faced in wearing masks is the perception abilities. Let me just finish the study, please.
Dr. Confer, we did all read the email that you sent to us, so I'd like you to...
Say that again.
Said we did all read the email that you sent to us, so I'd like you to skip to the...
Okay, thank you.
Our next online comment is from Lori Mildrew. She writes, I am writing again to stress our family's support of universal masking. Now is not the time to let our guards down. We have been fortunate to remain in person this year and masking is a large reason for this.
Thank you. The next room comment?
Good evening. You guys hear me okay? Great. Good evening. My name is Ross Muir and I'm the father of three daughters, two of which are currently enrolled at Kelly Elementary. I want to first acknowledge and thank all the members of the school board for the great job that you've done, the effort, the dedication to keep our schools open, so thank you. This pandemic has presented and continues to present a myriad of challenges, not fixed in time, but fluid and constantly changing. With these challenges comes an incredible opportunity to lead through adversity through adaptability, flexibility, and trust. This mask mandate must stop. It must stop now. Many parts of our school board's health and safety plan were put into place at the beginning of the pandemic when we didn't know nearly as much about COVID-19 as we do now, two years later. Two years later, there's an abundance of scientific, peer-reviewed evidence detailing the lack of efficacy with cleaning services and masking in school. Life-saving vaccines are readily available, as well as our ever-evolving knowledge of this virus. And the virus itself has changed over the last two years. The school... The school district's health and safety plan must change as well. Masking absolutely affects verbal and nonverbal communication. Numerous scientific papers have been published proving that it can be harder to hear and understand speech, identify facial expressions and emotions when wearing masks. These are wildly important for all of us humans. They're even more important for the developing brain within our growing children. Dr. Manfred Spitzer, a psychiatrist and cognitive neuroscientist, published on how masking impacts a child's development, quote, "Kids need to train up their facial recognition. They were never designed to see the upper half of the face to infer the lower half. Even adults have a hard time doing this." He continues, quote, "When communication is interfered with, if it happens for a week, that's okay. But if it happens for a half a year, that's an eternity when it comes to brain development at a very young age." So if we're using his scale for measurement, we are approaching four eternities in delayed brain development for our children. When my wife and I chose to live and build a family in the Lewisburg area school district, it was a massive decision, one that we weighed carefully against the others in the area. We chose Lewisburg. Why? Lewisburg stood out for an incredible education and inclusive environment for all learners, regardless of race, gender, sexual preference, socioeconomic status, mental abilities, and certainly regardless of vaccination status. A school district centered on building the strongest foundation for success in life, preparing them for life after school, be that in a trade, preparing them for the workforce, equipping them for college, providing them in an atmosphere where they can explore the arts and excel in athletics, free of judgment and free from the politics of our nation and even the politics of our local community. That's what we chose. That's what we pay our robust tax bill for. And those are the opportunities that Lewisburg area school district represents to all the children in our community and the parents of these children. I'd like to ask you a few questions. If you trusted us, if you trusted us parents and caregivers to notify you when our child wasn't feeling well prior to the pandemic, can you trust us again? Did you, did we do something to betray your trust? If we are a school district that gives our children two or more options for lunch every day, can we give them the choice to wear a mask? If we are a school district that encourages a child to sprint in the direction of their goals and dreams, can we allow them to take a full and complete breath without a mask? You see, this isn't a mask issue. This is an issue of choice. If you, as a parent, want to have your child wear a mask, by all means, let them wear one. If you, as the parent, want to get your child vaccinated, do it. I've done it. My wife's done it. It's great. They're your children. It's your choice. It's not the school's choice to get your child vaccinated. It's the parents'. Masking is no different. My wife Kirsten and I have one of the hardest jobs in the world, and a lot of you on this board and in the audience share the same title as us. Mom and dad. Your parents. We're parents. As the parents of our children, we should be in control of making the decisions for our personal health and well-being of our child. Thank you. God bless you. God bless the students and the teachers of the Lewisburg area school district.
Our next online comment comes from Lynn Mershahi. Dear School Board members, regarding the question of continuing the mask requirement at LASD schools, please consider continuing. Scientific studies have proven that masking works. Anecdotal evidence showed that other districts saw cases soaring and had to go remote DASD recently when they didn't mask. We have not had to switch to remote learning because we have been masking. Our students are also working hard for PMEA festivals, the musical, and winter sport district contests. For a viral variant that is as transmissible as Omicron, the time to stop masking is not right now, especially when most of the activities are still indoors. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next comment?
Hi. My name is Kimberly Drexler, and my family and I have lived here in Lewisburg since 2003. My oldest daughter graduated from LAHS in 2020, and I currently have another daughter in the high school and a son at the middle school. And I'm here to support the School Board, any administration, and your commitment to our children's well-being. You guys have a tremendously hard job, and I am super thankful and appreciative that you, that you do it and you take it so seriously and so thoughtfully. I have not thought, I don't have a comment on the change in contact tracing and quarantining. That all sounds very reasonable, and I support the efforts that the school district has put into rethinking that. But I do strongly still support the mask mandate, and I urge you not to pull it back at this time. Right now, COVID is raging through our community, and although some people are tired of it, it's not tired of us. We still see cases. Our healthcare system remains burdened. We hear from Evan and Geisinger, and I hope that we will listen to our public health professionals, that we will stand in partnership with them, and that we will do our part to help our community get past this pandemic, which everybody wants. I've heard some of the comments people have made about masking and just being opposed to it, that kids don't like masks, that they complain that it interferes with their education, that it stresses them out. And I'm certainly not going to argue with or disclaim anybody's personal experience, but I do want to speak from my own family's personal experience and from speaking with my children's friends. They don't mind masking. They don't like it. They're not going to keep wearing masks forever, but it doesn't bother them. It doesn't interfere with their education. It doesn't interfere with their social interactions, and they're not unhappy about it. I think that all of this politicizing, weaponizing the mask issue is actually more upsetting to our children. And I hope that we can come together and agree on a consensus and everybody commit to it and just take the pressure off. Kids have lots of anxiety for other reasons, and I actually think for some children, the constant back and forth about masking is a problem. And we need to, just like kids be kids, and that may, and I think should, mean wearing masks in school right now. You know, kids worry about a lot of things. One thing they worry about is getting COVID at school. They hear that it's not such a big deal for students, that they'll be okay, and that's probably all true, and we can all play the statistics game. But then they do hear about kids who got really sick, and even more concerning, and my, my own kids have friends in this very situation who got sick, in this case, not at school, but at club sports, and then took COVID home to an immunocompromised family member who became very ill and needed hospital care to survive it. Those are other things that cause our students to have anxiety and stress and nervousness. And I would just love it if we could take that pressure away from kids and just let the grown-ups make the decision and just keep the mask mandate in place for now. And hopefully, we will all turn a corner soon. But based on the science and what's out there with reports of COVID cases, we're not there yet. But again, I recognize you guys have a very hard job, and I'm super appreciative that you're doing it, and thank you for your thoughtfulness. Thank you.
Our next online comment comes from Jennifer Thompson. "I support keeping the current universal mask mandate in place. There is no scientific evidence to support the removal of the mask mandate. It will only increase the rate of COVID in the schools. With low child vaccination rates, masking is the only line of defense many children have against illness. Moreover, as we now know, the COVID infection has a permanent immune-damaging effect. It is unconscionable that we would experiment with the health of our children by allowing them to attend school without masks."
Thank you. Next comment?
Hi, my name is Emily Heather, and I will be sharing some comments from teachers from Kelly Elementary and one from a high school teacher. For the sake of time, I'll be reading a shorter version, but if you would like to read, anybody would like to read the full comments and see photos of the masks littering the playground and being worn by some students, you can go to bit.ly forward slash comments from teachers. That's B-I-T dot L-Y forward slash comments from teachers. The first comment. "Masking creates barriers in the classroom. I cannot understand what children are saying, which frustrates them, and many just say, never mind. It's a hygiene issue for young children. Some children are wearing masks that are browned from dirt. They chew them, sneeze in them, drop them at lunch on the floor, step on them, then put them back on their face. Classroom management has been harder since masking, too. Kids can only see half of my face, so they can only read half of my expression. In years past, all I needed to do was chew to look, and kids understood. I believe this is also why we see some of the behavior challenges we do. Wearing masks hinders students who are trying to learn letters and sounds. They are unable to see the teacher's mouth to properly imitate the sound in which they are supposed to be doing. Masks really affect those students who are having difficulty with basic phonemic awareness skills. Students can't hear the teacher clearly when words are spoken. Often, students repeat a word incorrectly during instruction because the mask muffles the sounds. I am seeing students who are significantly, significantly behind either one or two grade levels as a result of inconsistent school instruction. These students are at an extreme disadvantage with their academics. Masks also impede on a student's ability to read facial cues made by their teacher and their peers. Social skills are an important part of school, especially at the elementary level. Nonverbal language is a huge part of communication and social skills. This includes facial expressions, which have basically not been seen in two years by our students. Learning to read is one of the most important life skills. Seeing how to make sounds, observing the teacher's mouth, watching students try to say sounds that are difficult and possibly trying it multiple times are normal occurrences each day in classrooms. Once again, students have not been able to do this for almost two years. Kindergarten is a grade where students have no independent skills. I have my students spread out all over the room to avoid contact tracing, so I need to speak loudly so the students at the back of the room can hear through my mask. There is no quiet, independent work time. Having to wear a mask all day is absolutely exhausting. I think the worst part is for the students in my class that have speech problems or are shy or anxious. I try to create a loving classroom environment where everyone feels safe. It's hard to do when I have to ask students to repeat themselves multiple times because I can't understand them. It makes students feel self-conscious and nervous. Sometimes they get mad and shut down, or some students have just stopped raising their hand and have checked out. It's hard to keep kids engaged and confident learners when they don't feel comfortable speaking in class. And lastly, daily masking has caused many disruptions to learning at the high school level. It has been far more difficult to form personal connections with students. We cannot read facial expressions and not as non-verbal feedback of our instruction or while having a casual conversation. Students are not connecting as well with each other on a personal level either. They are far more likely to be using their phone where they feel they can actually connect with each other. Students have been less likely to ask questions during class or participate in group activities. If students do answer questions, it's difficult to hear them, especially for kids that are typically quiet. It feels as though many students are disappearing behind their masks. Many have expressed not liking school and just wanting school to be over so they don't have to deal with this. Masks have definitely been made, definitely made it more difficult to have a positive school and classroom environment. Thank you."
Thank you.
I believe 60 minutes of public comment have elapsed.
How many more online comments are there, John?
We have quite a few online, and I would imagine we probably have quite a few in person.
Can I see a show of hands of people who would like... All right. Yeah, can I get a motion to extend for just 15 minutes? Don't move. Only favor?
I'm sorry, how long?
15.
15 minutes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Read fast, John.
Our next online comment comes from Hazel Bonapane. "As a student at the Lewisburg area high school, I feel that the mask mandate is necessary to sustain the health and safety of all students. This prevents disruptions to the learning environment due to infections, which in turn ensures a more effective in-person education. It is important that we remain in school, and universal mask-wearing is the best way to achieve that."
Thank you. I saw three hands. I invited people.
Hi there. My name's Courtney, sorry, I'm a little short. My name's Courtney Remy. I'm here to discuss the health of the community. I've had the privilege of attending boys' and girls' basketball on Saturday mornings. I should mention that this is kindergarten basketball, which, if you haven't watched, is equal parts cute but also very painful. The only thing more painful is bringing out along a toddler as well. The basketball program two of my kids are in brings together our community, not just Lewisburg, but Mifflinburg, Milton, and Sealand Grove as well, many different school districts and ages. In one gym are about 200 people, grandparents watching and coaching, pregnant women, newborns, and of course, a lot of kids. And there are also masks, not on everyone, but on families who choose to wear them, on players who feel comfortable wearing them. And by and large, this feels the way sporting events do. Everyone's saying it's great game, try hard, encouraging. It's all the values that we want to teach our kids in this community. I really love a show of hands for everyone's here, for everyone who's here because you care about our community. Okay, so that's great. And everyone there, thank you, Erin. And yet, this pandemic that in 2020 brought us together oddly. We all came together to care and support one another. We all wore masks because your mask protected you. My mask protected me. Some of us got vaccinated. We've, we really have come together at some point, and now we've lost that way. And that is just really upsetting because if our small but very mighty town of Lewisburg can't come together, then what hope does the rest of this country have? I'm asking every person in this room to set aside their own political beliefs, their own fears, and trust each other. Trust that your neighbor is not going to send their kids to school knowing they have a fever. Trust that the guardians of these young minds know what is best for their own family, and trust your own kids. I'm going to underscore that one because we've had a number of kids speak tonight. If you've asked them to wear a mask because that's important to you, then they're wearing them. In kindergarten at Kelly Elementary, there are kids who don't take their mask off at recess because it's important to their family, and that's okay. No one here is saying that we want to mandate no masks, right? No one is saying that. It's important for kids to feel like they have a voice, and they do. At lunch, if kids are not feeling comfortable being close to one another, they are asking to be moved further away. Because these are kindergartners, guys. We should be so proud of our five-year-olds for speaking up. We've done really, really well, and they've done so well. They are doing everything they can, and yet even after years of missed classes, remote learning, and not seeing the faces of their teachers and receiving vaccines, the message is, it's not enough. And I ask you, when is it enough? Why are we continuing to put the burden of this pandemic on our children? What message are we sending? Perhaps we're looking at this the wrong way. A Dr. Geisinger, not Brad, recently shared this little analogy with me, and given the Super Bowl this weekend, I felt like it was appropriate. Perhaps we're looking at this right now as offense versus defense, but maybe this is really about the special teams. Like, can we throw a kicker to the line of scrimmage? Let's play ball, whatever sport you want to go with, but let's get your family, your own family comfortable at sporting events. Trust your kids to what you feel comfortable with, and let's move forward as one community of respect to be an example for other split towns, split states, and split countries. Last, I just want to point out that two things can be true at once. Masks can be a layer to reduce transmission, and they can also harm kids, especially the young learners who don't have the right social and emotional skills, that need help with phonetics, that can't read yet. We've heard that from our teachers. We've heard that from our students. And I'd just like to also point out that in healthcare and in education, we evaluate and we problem-solve on a case-by-case basis. There's no one-size-fits-all approach in education, and there's no one-size-fits-all approach to healthcare. There's risks and benefits of everything, and I would hope that we can allow our families to operate on the risks that they're willing to take. Let's operate as we do at basketball games, hockey, soccer, Walmart, Target, Weiss and Giant. Let's go for the field goal, the least restrictive environment, where people operate in a way that feels comfortable for them and a way that allows our community and the greater Susquehanna Valley to come together. Thank you.
Our next online comment comes from Abby Schechter. "Members of the board, thank you for your continued support of universal masking within our district buildings. Study after study shows in-person education to be the most valuable mode of learning. We know that remote learning exacerbates educational inequities, deprives students of social skills and reliable nutrition, and increases mental health crises. Unlike neighboring districts, Lewisburg has been able to offer consistent in-person learning due to your willingness to follow..." due to your willingness to follow the advice of public health experts. Union County continues to be rated at a level of extremely high risk for transmission, so if we want to keep schools open, we need to continue to keep masks on. Universal masking prioritizes the health of all students, faculty, and staff in our schools as well as immunocompromised families in the community. I implore you to continue this policy through April 19th, as originally agreed upon. While you may hear from a small group of community members who disagree with mask mandates, your responsibility as board members is to consider the health of all constituents and to make decisions that provide the safest, healthiest, and most equitable options for learning. Let's work together to keep our schools open. Thank you.
Next room comment, please.
Hi, Laura Graver. In order to expedite, my husband Ryan Graver is here. I'll just speak on behalf of both of us. Ryan is an end-to-end honest and has a practice here in Lewisburg, and I, Laura, am a hematology drugs specialist with Abbi Pharmaceuticals. We're both parents, we're both fully vaccinated and boosted because we work in healthcare settings with patients who are in the highest-risk category for COVID. That's patients over the age of 65, and some of which are significantly immunosuppressed. We also both wear well-fitted KN95 masks the entire time we are at work. For Ryan, that is nine hours straight, five days a week, for the last two years to catch up from COVID. We share this not to persuade others on their personal choices, but as an example of two people who care deeply about this community. We don't throw caution to the wind. We do and will continue to respect proper COVID precautions in appropriate environments. However, we both implore the board members to consider the comments submitted to you by Dr. Brad Compher and Beth Compher. Their submission to you is extremely well researched and articulated with care. We fully endorse their recommendation to the board. We are all aware of the different types of masks and the level of protection they provide. Well, what do you actually feel the masks are protecting from our children at this point? We also know that one-way masking to protect the wearer is extremely effective for anyone who is at higher risk. We know the risk of bad medical outcomes from the Omicron variant are low, yet the hindrance caused by masks academically, socially, mentally, and physically have been accumulating in our schools. If you feel otherwise, please tonight cite your evidence for your stance in a well-documented, researched manner, not driven by fear, but driven by the facts. We assure you that we will listen to your evidence in a respectful manner because we respect you as community members and for what you've done to give of your time to our board. But please also take the time to consider ours. Make masks a choice starting tomorrow.
Our next online comment comes from Emily Stowe. Our masking policy has been instrumental in letting us use the test-to-stay program from the state, and more importantly, kept our kids in the classroom when other non-masking school districts have had many, many days of virtual learning. The current health plan has provisions for assessing the masking policy when community transmission is not occurring. Therefore, there is no need to alter the policy as it stands. While the numbers are dropping in the county, we are still seeing approximately 30 people a day testing positive for COVID and are considered to be at extreme risk for the unvaccinated. Now is not the time to change a policy that is protecting our community.
Hello. My name is Jessica Gallegos. I have a daughter who graduated from Lewisburg three years ago, and also a junior that's in high school. I am in favor of keeping the mask mandate. First, I'd like to say there are masks that are clear. For those that have problems seeing a mask, like in the elementary environment, there are awesome microphones that I've heard of teachers using as well. I'd also like to say many of the students that surround our area, like in Milton Districts and other districts that have no mask mandate, have made it to where they have had to go virtual several times. And as we know, in-person learning is the best learning for our students. Also, this last election in November, our county overwhelmingly, we voted for a school board who had those types of opinions and voiced those when they were getting elected. Vaccines have been required in schools for a very long time. What got us out of polio was vaccines. And I can only see that that will be the way forward through getting through COVID. And as many students have had vaccines, there are also those that have other comorbidities, like asthma, that can make it to where they're more susceptible to having long symptoms. If they get COVID and are able to go through that, they can still have long symptoms even after that. And I'd like to say, like, I can understand not having it to where students have to stay home if they're asymptomatic, but I don't think that you should change the masking mandate and do both of them at the same time. What else did I want to say? Oh, about... I guess that's all. Thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate you hearing all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next online comment comes from Jeff Schechter. As a scientist, grandparent, and LASD resident, I feel it should be self-evident that masking helps protect our students, not only from COVID-19, but also reduces the risk from influenza, the common cold, and other airborne pathogens. Additionally, as you know, the CDC recommends masking as a means of preserving in-person learning opportunities. Masking in our Lewisburg schools not only helps protect those in the building, but also reduces the risks for family members too young to be vaccinated and adults who have other factors that increase their health risks. Masking should remain a public health concern, not a public opinion matter. Current masking policies should remain in force until such time as our nation's public health scientists agree it is safe to conduct in-person public education without this protection. Thank you for your efforts on our behalf.
Don't believe there were any more individuals in the room? All right, Dr. Ferrell.
Yes, I can read one more, and then we'll have used up the additional 15 minutes. This comment comes from Megan Mulligan. I understand the school board will be revisiting the mask policy. As a parent of three children in the Lewisburg schools, I am writing to ask that you continue the mask mandate in our schools. The science is clear on the effectiveness of masks in preventing the spread of COVID, especially considering our children are inside together for several hours at a time. We have been able to keep our schools open in person because of our masking policy. Please don't abandon this policy now. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody who came here to speak. I would especially like to thank students. We don't often hear from students, and I'm very grateful to all of you at the time.
Dr. Zerwin, can you move the microphone closer to you, please?
Can you hear me now? I was saying that I thank you all for coming, and I especially thank the students. We don't often hear from students, and I'm very grateful to the students who came tonight to speak. I'm, of course, grateful to everybody else and to all of those who submitted comments online. Next on the agenda is the board representative's comments, but I under...
Sorry? So can I just ask, how many more comments were submitted online? Can we take the time to read them? I mean, I would make a motion, I think it's...
About 10 more.
10 more?
10 more.
Okay. I would make a motion to extend the time to finish the comments online.
Second.
I would to hear them, to our community members.
That's fine.
I second it.
Seconded by Ms. Kraus. All in favor? All right, John. Do you?
Okay. Next comment is from John and Katrina Del Vecchio. We strongly support continued mandatory masking in all LASD school buildings during the school day and during extracurricular activities. We support the continued use of contact tracing to alert exposed and potentially exposed students and their families. This issue isn't partisan, it isn't politics. COVID doesn't care how you vote, pray, eat, or et cetera. The CDC recommends wearing a mask up to and including N95s and similar to reduce the spread of COVID, period. That is a fact. Wearing a mask isn't a health risk, it isn't child abuse. It is a minor inconvenience to promote the overall health of the public. Look at some of the surrounding school districts. The ones that have gone mask optional have also had to go virtual several times this year. The correlation isn't hard to see. Keep the mask mandatory until April 19th as planned, and revisit the health and safety plan then. Next comment is, oh, that one's, let's see here. Next comment is from Sharon Ryder. I support the elimination of the current contact tracing protocol. It has become apparent that the policies, while causing much chaos and loss of learning, have produced little benefit in stopping the spread of COVID. It is time for the school staff to again focus on their intended job responsibilities. I ask that the board revisit the health and safety plan at the next meeting in consideration of moving to a mask-recommended policy. With cases and hospitalizations declining and COVID restrictions being lifted in other areas, school districts, and across the country, it makes sense to give families the choice of whether the benefit of wearing masks is worth the potential harm. The masks being used are not as effective as hoped and are a distraction to learning. They hinder the ability to form meaningful relationships between students and teachers, make it harder to hear others and breathe, and take away a crucial piece of social development, the ability to see people's faces. Thank you for your consideration. Our next comment is from Dawn Warren. We continue to e-school our son for the second year in support of my husband and others in the healthcare field who are working long hours to save lives in our community. We were hoping to send our son back for his last marking period at Kelly if the vaccination numbers went up and masking continued. We feel it is a small thing to ask of others to be unselfish in order to support those trying to save lives in our community. Next comment is from Megan Schumacher. I appreciate your willingness to revisit these issues. I request that you discuss the validity of your masking policy and consider making masks optional at a sooner date. If our elected school board members truly feel that masking equals safety, then why are many of them and their families continuously seen in social settings without them? How can you mandate masks in schools for our children when those requiring masking for safety in schools are not adhering to their own guidelines? At this point, masking in our schools is a futile effort as many of our students, administrators, faculty, staff, board members, and their families are attending events in our community and other school districts without masks. While in our communities, we have the choice to be mask-free, and most people seem to be embracing this, what example does this set for our children? Do as I say, not as I do. I ask that you consider eliminating masking at a sooner date than proposed due to the inconsistencies with this policy and lack of efficacy of masking. Our next comment is from Jove Graham. Hi, I work at Geisinger, and every day we see that we are still in an Omicron surge that resulted in our highest-ever number of hospitalized COVID patients just three weeks ago. The county's transmission level is red. CDC recommendations for masking and American Academy of Pediatrics guidance has not changed since the fall. This is not the time to weaken any protections. Please continue following the physician's advice to keep masks through the spring break. Please keep exit criteria tied to community transmission levels getting lower. The Department of Health reports only 30% to 31% of currently eligible children in Union County ages 5 to 18 are fully vaccinated, so eligibility does not equal vaccination. Proper masking in schools has been shown to help reduce spread regardless of an individual's vaccination status. All of us share the desire for life to go back to normal as quickly as possible, but a school board must act according to conditions on the ground. Please do not vote tonight to do anything that would weaken the current health and safety plan. Thank you. Our next comment is from Michael Drexler. He writes, "I oppose changing the health and safety plan at this time. Masks should be required until our area meets the CDC guidance for masking indoors." Next comment is from Ann Murphy. As a director and a pre-K teacher for 16-plus years at a local preschool, I would like to share some of my observations and a few of the negative impacts that wearing masks have on our kids. First of all, this is a time when boys and girls are learning the letter sounds. The majority of this learning depends on seeing the formation that the mouth and tongue have to make in order for them to form each letter sound correctly. This also impacts the way the children enunciate each letter sound. Students cannot hear very well because the mask muffles the sounds. This creates frustration among the learners, which in turn causes a negative attitude towards learning. Wearing masks hinders the ability for children to learn sounds properly. In addition, students are not able to see others' expressions because their faces are covered. This is crucial in the development of our children, who will not be able to read facial expressions or nonverbal prompts because half of their face has been covered. Furthermore, it is very difficult to teach and breathe with a mask on. Masks should not be forced on children. If parents wish to have their child wear a mask, that should be their own personal decision. It is time to think about the impact that covering these beautiful faces has created socially, emotionally, and educationally on our little learners. Our next comment is from Donna Ebenstein. Our family has several concerns related to the proposed changes to the health and safety plan. First, we do not see a reason to change the end date for masking from April to March based on possible access to vaccines as there is already an exit strategy linked to reduction in community spread should conditions improve. Second, our family is concerned that a sentence saying that distancing of three feet will be in place when practicable has just been deleted in the new plan without a rationale. We understand there are more students in school this year than last year, but we believe there should still be efforts made to distance in the schools. Our son has been reporting more indoor recesses and mask breaks recently despite language in the plan endorsing outside activity. We do not want to weaken social distancing efforts further. We were also confused by the lack of a definition of students with fragile health in the new plan in the context of contact tracing. Finally, we did not feel that it was appropriate to include the new sentence in the proposed revision that states the district assumes that most every person is a contact of someone who has tested positive for COVID-19 by virtue of being in settings outside the home. This sounds like a personal opinion and not a fact supported by evidence. Next comment comes from Marion Marchiori. Dear school board directors, thank you for your continued commitment to strong COVID health and safety measures and universal masking during the recent rises of COVID-19 transmission in our local area. Masking allowed LASD to remain in person, while at least one other local district had to go virtual last month due to their lack of a masking requirement. It is especially important to support our teachers who want to continue universal masking while they are with our children each day. As you consider proposed changes to the current COVID health and safety plan, I ask that you please continue to tie the masking requirements to local transmission rates instead of whether vaccines are available. Vaccines prevent severe infections, and masks prevent the spread of COVID, so both are important. A recent CDC study indicates that consistently wearing a mask, cloth, surgical, or N95 KN95 in indoor public settings protects against the acquisition of COVID-19 infection. We have three more. This one is from Samantha Pearson. I want our schools to continue to be able to stay open safely for in-person education. Therefore, I am in favor of continuing the mask mandate as well as contact tracing and quarantine requirements as part of the LASD health and safety plan responding to COVID-19. These policies are not permanent and should and will be revisited, but with the local hospitals still having marked levels of COVID patients comparable to levels from this time a year ago, it is not yet time to relax mitigation in school. Union County is still under 60% vaccinated, and encouraging transmission in school puts the families of students and teachers and staff, as well as the rest of the community, at higher risk of more pronounced exposure. If there is a concern about differential impact on students depending on vaccination status, it would make sense to expand contact tracing and quarantine for vaccinated people in the case of unmasked exposure, as opposed to getting rid of it for everyone. The distinction between wearing masks in public versus having more room for judgment in private applies very directly to school. Students attending in-person schools should consider mitigation measures appropriate for any indoor public settings. The fact the school is not literally open to the entire public, and the groupings in classrooms are repeated and habitual like workplaces, may make people want to treat them like other personal contacts. The reality is that masking continues to be appropriate for everyone in such settings, at least for now. Some families are continuing to exercise caution outside of school while other families are not using mitigation at all in the rest of their lives. Some of those who are not masking elsewhere are asking to extend that to their children's experience in school, but it is precisely because different families have widely varying health risk levels and approaches to infection and transmission that the school district should maintain higher public health standards. Schools and classrooms are the opposite of pandemic pods. They are community mixers, bringing together children from families with very different circumstances. In that context, mitigation, in particular masking, continues to make sense. Next comment is from Susannah Kispard. My daughter was a close contact to a student with COVID at school. We were not notified by the school until almost a week after the exposure, which I am sure was as soon as the school was made aware. My daughter developed symptoms a few days after her exposure, which was three to four days before we were notified that she had been exposed. Because we were aware... Because we were aware that our county is still having high levels of new COVID cases, we isolated our daughter as soon as she developed her first URI symptom. Despite this, other family members subsequently developed COVID because, as we all know, COVID is most contagious starting two days prior to symptom onset before we could have possibly known that she had COVID. She transmitted COVID to my son, who is asthmatic. He is fully vaccinated and is starting to feel better now, but he had multiple asthma attacks in the first couple of days of his illness. Our family is fully vaccinated and relatively healthy, so though we are still currently ill with COVID, I anticipate that our family will do well. However, there are many school students in our district that have family members who are immunocompromised, have lung disease, and/or may just be unlucky enough to suffer severe COVID disease. Medical staff are becoming more skilled at treating COVID, but despite this, COVID deaths in Pennsylvania are on the rise. Currently, over 150 people die of COVID each day in Pennsylvania alone. Omicron variant is generally milder than previous strains, but is clearly still deadly and is much more contagious than previous COVID strains. Union County new case numbers are still higher than our peak last year. Our schools and even our public health departments, despite making every effort, cannot contact trace in a timely manner to keep up with the number of new cases and exposures. Though the schools are unable to prevent the spread of COVID through contact tracing, there are some measures that schools can take to limit the spread of this deadly disease through our schools and to our homes. Many studies have shown that masks help prevent the spread of COVID. Now is clearly not the time to remove the mask mandate. People will die from COVID that is contracted because of school exposures. This is inevitable. There are limits to what we can do to prevent those deaths, but if we fail to take such a simple action as continuing a masking mandate, we are morally responsible. And our last comment comes from Sarah Rue. I am writing again to reiterate our family's support for LASD's current health and safety plan and universal masking in particular. This plan has proven to work in keeping our kids in person in school. We are all tired of COVID and wearing masks, but I urge the board not to allow our COVID fatigue to get in the way of doing what is necessary to keep our kids safe and in school. Since we returned to school in January, we have heard about more and more kids and teachers being out of school due to quarantines or positive cases. We have also heard rumors that schools may have to go to remote learning. Luckily, school buildings are still open, and our kids are still learning in person and participating in after-school activities. Let's not jeopardize all of these good things. Let's continue to listen to the CDC and local health experts. Let's continue to teach our kids that it's important to care about each other, even if it means the inconvenience of wearing a mask. Thankfully, we are starting to see a dramatic decrease in the number of new cases in Union County. It's anyone's guess if this is a sign that we may soon be out of the woods. Let's see how the situation evolves and make reasoned decisions based on the available information. I know we will all be thrilled for the day when masks are no longer necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the board representatives' comments, but I believe the principals are foregoing that opportunity this evening, so we thank them for being here, and we will move on to the first item of board action, which is indeed the 2021-22 Health and Safety Plan. Is there a motion to approve the plan? We make a motion and pass it, and then we discuss it. Moved by Dr. Jablonsky, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Stanton. Discussion, and I will turn it first to Dr. Ball.
Dr. Fairchild? Okay. Yeah. Okay, just a little bit of a highlight on what's in the revised, the proposed revised Health and Safety Plan, in case you didn't have an opportunity to read the plan first. First slide, these are some of the factors that went into our recommendation to the school board for action. This year is different than last year. There are a few things that have changed. One is the availability of home tests, and it's important for us to say that we hope people are acting responsibly, but we don't really know exactly how many people might have COVID. The Department of Health no longer notifies schools there's a positive case, so we have to rely on parents, and many have affirmatively let us know that that is the case. Our experiences of our staff who have had to engage in contact tracing from, when we learn of the case and then finding out, not just from a seating chart, but talking to the teachers to see exactly where that student might have been, and a few days may have elapsed, we're starting to become concerned that this isn't as effective as it was last year. We also have to take into consideration that people are moving around rather normally in activities and other kinds of social settings, so there's no way to really say that school is the vector of transmission. It's certainly an opportunity, but just like an opportunity anyplace else. We're looking at the science also with this variant. It is much more contagious. We also know there's availability of vaccines now. Some folks have opted to go in that direction. Some folks are waiting to see, or some folks just are not strong believers of vaccine, and that's not a judgment on anybody. I can share with you that we have between our vaccination rates of our staff, which I only know because if they've had to request admin leave for their own illness or to be tested or cared for their family, we're at about 90% or so, and that includes people who may have already contracted it within the past 90 days. In our schools, it's a little bit different. You know, it's not a required vaccine, and it's not something that we're required to collect, like your school-age vaccinations like measles, mumps, and rubella. We find that we have at least on hand about 50% to 60% with our secondary students and anywhere from about 25% to 40% with our elementary students. But many more people may be vaccinated, and respectfully, parents may just not want to share that information because it's not something that we need to know. We've only learned of additional vaccinations due to contact tracing. So there's quite a bit that we talked about as an administrative team, talking with our school nurses, also hearing from our faculty who are in the crosshairs of having to work through these mitigation strategies, but then also still be responsive to the kids. And the kids really are their greatest care, and any of the comments that we heard tonight are certainly coming with all honesty and respect for ensuring that the kids have a good experience at school. Can advance, John? Okay, so this is where we are. We already experienced, at least within school, our Omicron surge, and this is tracking just like any other holiday that we've seen. The difference over this winter break is the prevalence of Omicron. So we've seen 147 positive cases up to February 7th, when this PowerPoint was made, and that's among students and staff across all of the building. 129 quarantines that we've had to trace, and that has taken multiple days and quite a bit of time. It is true that sometimes by the time we've notified a family member or parent that their child has been contact traced, we find out then that they're vaccinated, and that's great, but there's nothing that they would need to do because they're just wearing the mask, or it's a day that they may be out, and still that's disruptive, disruptive to the instruction, it's disruptive to the student. It looks as though, we don't have this scientifically recorded, but we're able to trace who might have been a contact in school, but again, not knowing if there were contacts outside of school, only about 6% of the students who also then became positive were in school contact. You can see that our cases have really dropped, and the way it looks so far this week, it's probably going to trend in that same direction. We also have parents who keep their kids home responsibly. They themselves have tested positive or have symptoms, and just for the safety of everybody, they just keep their child home until their symptoms resolve, or the parent definitively finds out, or another member of the household, if they're positive or not. So this is also based on what parents are telling us, and that's what's really important. Regardless of what's on the Department of Health's website for schools or the Department of Education's website, we have not received a phone call. I don't even think since I'm looking at Ms. Reber, maybe in August, once or twice there was a spreadsheet, but they're really not letting us know at all. The Department of Health isn't doing the contact trace. They've left it to the schools to make that decision, and this recommendation includes in here for us to be able to move away from contact tracing, still having some provisions for people's safety, but let us get back to the business of educating your children and the children or young adults that are in the room and not doing the job of public health officials. Thank you. Contact tracing, so we're going to ask parents to do what we've always asked them to do, keep their sick kids home. If your child has symptoms, it very well may be a cold, but it might be COVID. Use your judgment. This has been around long enough for people to understand what they need to do to act responsibly, not just for the people that their children may come in contact with, but other members of their household and their extended family. Let the school know, and only for the purpose of, we do have staff members that have health issues, and we do have students who have compromised immune system. We're not going to contact trace, but we may let the parent know or the staff member know that a person has tested positive in that classroom, but not to the degree, just so they can monitor their own symptoms and, you know, from there, make a determination if they need to get tested or take additional precaution. I already laid out some of the rationale for this. Parents, the reason why we were successful last year is because our parents were very much partner with us in this effort, and I know that they can be again, and we'd like to continue to have that kind of relationship with our family. It's also important to note that, again, with home tests, we really don't know the accuracy of the numbers either way, and that's just going to be the state of thing as we start to move. On masking, our proposal is, once vaccines are available for children five and under, that we move away from requiring masks for all students. We would make N95s available for anybody who feels that they need that extra layer of precaution for themselves or somebody in their family. At this point, we also have staff members who have children who are at that age level not yet eligible, and in order for schools to stay open, we need to make sure that our teachers are there. They've done a wonderful job trying to prepare lessons or teach virtually when they've had to be out, but it's exceptionally disruptive. So the other part of that is if our community's spread drops to low or moderate, certainly as it's written in the plan, move away from the masking as being something that is required. Vaccination is still the most effective thing. Our rates maybe, and the Lewisburg area may be different than the rates of all of Union County, so that's something that's a personal choice, and over time, people may reevaluate their choices if they haven't decided to do that, but it's understandable why people are certainly cautious about that right now. And we want to give the little children the ability to get vaccinated. It doesn't protect 100%, doesn't say that one won't get COVID, but certainly their illness may be less severe than if they did not have the vaccine. That's it. Thank you, John.
So at this time, we will, the board will discuss the proposal. Up to you all.
I'd like to amend my motion to just discuss and approve, or just discuss and vote on E, which is the contact tracing component, to get started.
We have an amendment to vote only on section E, which is the portion of the proposal that describes the change to contact tracing. Following along, E. There a second to that motion? Seconded by Dr. Unsegur Fosero, the discussion of that motion? Yes, we're moving on to discuss.
Right. Yes. So I would like to speak in favor of it, as written, with the exception of this sentence. If the district learns that a student or staff member has tested positive, it will notify the parent of a student, and it currently says with fragile health, but I'd also like to have an opt-in opportunity for parents who would just like to be notified of potential exposure, so don't have to prove a fragile health condition, but would just opt in to be notified. That's the only change. I think everything else as written is good to go.
Or any discussion of changing the language about children with fragile health to language that would offer families the opportunity to contact tracing?
Yeah, so children with health concerns and any parent who wishes to opt in to be notified of potential exposure.
So how does that work in actual practice if we already know that contact tracing, it's, we just can't do it according to what we're being told?
So right now, the burden of contact tracing is really volume, right? There's so many people to notify, but I don't know that that many people will do the opt-in. If the child doesn't have a health concern, it's possible they have a family member with a significant health concern, and so they might like to take the opportunity to do a home test or something like that for people who need to be extra cautious because of a family situation. So I, like I said, I don't expect significant opt-in, and I think it would be a much less burden on the nurses right now.
And I'm assuming, Erin, by opting in, they're not saying they want their child quarantined necessarily, they just want the information, so therefore, within their own family, they know what to look for.
Opting into notification only, just opting into notification.
So if they have a vulnerable individual in their household, they can be extra cautious?
Exactly.
That is their choice.
Right.
Is the option to opt-in available only to people not necessarily?
We're not going to means test this, no.
So if I understand the procedure here, and correct me, please, if I'm wrong, we, if there's no further discussion, we could move the vote on only item E. Is there any further discussion on item E with the change proposed by Dr. Jablonsky?
So we're rejecting the rest of the health and safety plan?
No, we're voting only on E at this time, and then we'll move on to discussion of the rest of the plan.
Yeah, yes, exactly.
I still don't understand the revision, I guess, and I don't know how that's going to work with staffing, I mean.
Like, Erin, what I understand Erin's saying is that there might only be a few people that want to do that, but if there are a whole bunch that want to do it, we're back to an inordinate amount of staff time to trace down these people and the coordinates and, you know. Am I wrong?
If I could off.
Yes.
The best we could do is to notify someone that, a parent, that a child in that classroom tested positive. May not be that that, their own child was sitting next to that child. That's where the contact tracing gets very cumbersome, because we have to track down where that child was over a 48-hour period. So it would be very vague.
Right.
But they'd at least know.
I think that's an important point. It's much more generic, so you're just, you find out a child in a room has tested positive. Any parent, any parent from a child in that room that has opted in just gets a notification of potential exposure. There are some people who are still very concerned that they may not learn their kid has been exposed, and they might have a family member at home who has significant health concerns, but the rest of it, I think, is very good. It will take a significant burden off the nurses. We will not be having kids who are asymptomatic and healthy out of school, so it really does, I think, solve a lot of the contact tracing issues, but still take into account that we have a few families with significant concerns.
But at the high school, doesn't it add burden because these students are moving around from classroom to classroom? So if a student tests positive in a classroom in first period, that student then moves to, help me out, guys, seven other, eight other classrooms, so now we're contacting every single parent who opts in in every single period throughout the day. That actually seems like more of a burden than it was previously. We're contacting, it doesn't even mean that they were in close contact, it means that they were in a classroom, potentially one out of six or seven classrooms during the day.
My understanding is right now, all of the notification has been done via phone call, is that correct?
It has been. We have started to email parents, blind, carby, copy, to just let them know, just because of the volume.
Right, so it's a much easier situation when we're just doing a BCC email to whatever group of people.
But that could potentially cause a lot more panic, and, you know, it doesn't even mean that they were in close contact, it means that somebody, potentially, we can't give them more information. It just means that somebody throughout their day tested positive, but with no more information that they were actually in close contact. So to me, that would panic me more as a parent who would want to be notified. I see it as a, in some cases, potentially a very false alarm, and maybe, maybe that's okay, but I still see that being a huge burden on the staff. I would, I would at least like to get some administrative feedback from that, you know, and I don't want to put people on the spot. Sorry, administrators, I'm putting you on the spot, but.
I will gladly go on the spot with that one. I personally think it would create an enormous burden if you are talking about an entire classroom. Usually, we have to go back, you know, two days for the, a student that maybe have tested positive. So right now, just to give you an idea to accurately understand what that looks like now, you know, we find out.
You know, we find out, we have to email the teachers because even though we have seating charts, it's 15 cumulative minutes. So during the course of a day, how many emails are, is a teacher getting? Trying to remember in some cases, four, five, six days ago, what they were doing, what types of activities, what groups, who were near each other. Then we are looking to see who is vaccinated and not vaccinated. Trying to separate out, making the calls for those who are close contacts, who are unvaccinated. That's our first priority. Even sending the email is still an exorbitant amount of time. It is looking up, first of all, each student's schedule, like I said, contacting the teachers. And then, you know, it's different with how long that five days and whether they should be wearing the mask then, recommended outside of those five days. You have to look up each one of those addresses. You have to send an email. You have to adjust dates in that email. If I had to do that for an entire class, and, and I mean, that could be, as Jordan was saying, you could be looking at, at over 100 families that you're contacting and you actually are giving them less information because you're not saying they're a close contact. You're just saying, hey, they had contact within this classroom. I honestly don't.
And what do we do at, what do we do at lunch then? If somebody eats lunch during a certain period?
Then we're looking at cameras or asking the students who they ate at lunch. And a lot of times the students are really good telling us, plus there's also buses. Plus there's also how the students are coming back and forth.
So with the recommend, or with the amended motion, I mean, what, what would you propose that we do at lunch? Notify everybody during that lunch period that somebody eating that lunch period was tested positive?
No, no, that is not the situation. So I understand that contact tracing is a burden, but I also understand that there are some people who are very concerned about the complete elimination of contact tracing because right now they rely on that for monitoring their own children. It is a, the volume is a problem. I would like to significantly reduce the volume. And most importantly, I don't want asymptomatic kids to be excluded from school. I think that's, you know, everyone's first priority. If we cannot do anything for the students with a family health concern, I withdraw my motion, but I would welcome revisit in a future date if we find that there is something we can do. For example, automation, I feel like there's a software solution to what was just described, but that's something we can revisit at a later time.
I'm sorry, I just want to respond to that. And I'm all for automating when you can automate. But automate, automation also requires someone to enter and someone to get the information out. So it's not, I mean, we've been looking at how many years of getting forms online and we still don't have, you know, that yet. I am not saying if there is someone with a fragile health condition, I would rather have the parents opt in and do the close contact the way that we had been, rather than notifying an entire class. Because now I have increased the volume to who I normally wouldn't even have been contacting, and then you're going to get more of a follow-up. Well, how close was my child was?
Right. So I, I agree. I would amend my motion to adopt that. So the language would read notify the parent of a student with health concerns or with, I would say, personal or family health concerns. How about if it's worded that way? So the exact sentence would read, if the district learns that a student or staff member has tested positive, it will notify the parent of a student with health concerns or family health concerns that his or her child may have been in contact with someone who has tested positive for COVID-19. So the parent can monitor his or her child.
Do we need that written in there or could parents just take that upon themselves to contact and work that out individually?
Right now, it only allows for children with fragile health. It doesn't allow for a family.
I can't understand you, Erin.
Right now, it only allows for children with fragile health. It does not allow for a family with a health concern.
So the specific wording in the plan right now only says children.
Exactly.
Maybe the nuance is just changing it to child or family member or?
Right. That's what Erin just suggested. I think the, the effort is to just broaden it slightly so that a child who has a member of their household with a significant health could also be in this small group of people who would be notified.
That would then be a contact of a contact and we don't currently trace that. So we only do direct contacts. So then we'd be too removed from what we do currently, if that makes sense.
Even when the Department of Health was contact tracing, we weren't going to that extreme.
I'm not suggesting that it's the family member who is positive. It's not what I'm suggesting. I'm saying that if a student comes into contact with someone who is positive, all I'm, the problem I'm trying to solve is that right now this only allows that a child with fragile health would be notified. But there, children can go home completely asymptomatic, not realize, and pass the virus. And we have some families with significant health concerns. And so they would want to test the kid, take extra precaution, whatever it might be. So I'm, I think I'm broadening the pool very little. I'm saying either the child has whatever we're defining fragile health as, or they have a family member. I just want those parents to be notified if their, if their kid is a close contact of a positive case. That's all.
I, I appreciate the discussion and I understand at the heart of what, what I think you're trying to get at, Erin. My, my concern is, is that, okay, what is a significant health condition and who's parsing that out? So a parent may have different feelings about somebody at home with what that, is that asthma? Is that cancer? You know, what is all of that? We're not going to want to have that information and have those specific conversations. More importantly, one of my concerns with the contact tracing all along has been, who else is the state asking to contact trace besides schools? So that same person could be exposed at work, but workplaces aren't necessarily required to contact trace. So now we're going and we're doing something that in a lot of other areas within the community, there, there is no contact tracing. So why are we taking on that burden as well? And, and that's, you know, again, if we have children with fragile health situations, I mean, absolutely, I understand that. But when we start going further down into, into families, I understand that people would be concerned, but they could be exposed in a lot of other places and there is no requirement to do that anywhere else. So now we're taking on that, that responsibility to go a little further. And I think that the ripple effects of it could be that, that the work that we would have to do would be just as cumbersome in some ways. At my building, I've got a kid in one classroom for the most part. They're in a, an isolated cohort. Middle school and high school, that would really be broad. So I just would be really concerned about expanding that. Thank you.
I do think it's worth saying that there is two steps to the contact tracing. So there's the part of it that's being discussed that's affecting the children as far as the quarantining and the reaching out. So when you're limiting the amount of people, like having an opt-in list, it is going to limit that amount and the work done on that end and the part, part that's affecting the kids and students. But with even just the fragile students, there's going to be an amount of work that's going to be done on the administration end because of the fact that in different schools, like Jordan said, you're switching classes or you're on the bus. So this, keeping it just to a fragile child isn't going to like completely eliminate the work that's going to need to be done by the administration because children are switching classes, they're on buses, they're in the cafeteria. So there's the two steps to that as far as how much work is being added because you can't just say, just because we have one student, we're only tracking for that. Every time somebody tests positive, you're going to have to track their interaction with that, even just one fragile student. So it's not exponentially with an opt-in list, making it that much harder because the work is already being done by the administration to make sure that those fragile children are not having contact.
So we're essentially still contact tracing the way that we are.
We would be doing that for the fragile student, even if we have one fragile student, we would still be doing that administration end. It's not going to be affecting and quarantining the other students as far as the reach out and, and the time that takes. But yeah, with any, with anybody that we're putting that in list, like that process in place with, then we're not eliminating that for the administration. So I think that's important to note that if we do have people that want to opt in, I think that could be a valuable opportunity for people because without an opt-in list, we're still including that medical fragile student. And so we're still including those tasks for the administration.
Can I put the admin, the building level principals on the spot again, and I apologize. I normally really try to avoid doing this, but could I just ask, short of phone calls? Cause I know you guys aren't the only ones making the phone calls and nurses are doing a lot of that or emails. How much time do you guys spend per day contact tracing and reviewing surveillance cameras of who's in close contact? I mean, and maybe that's inappropriate for me to ask, but I would just like to get a sense of how much time we're dedicating to that right now.
I would say that it varies. I mean, today, knock on wood, I don't think we had any. There have been times that's two or three, four days straight. That's all we do. So when you're doing that, you're also not doing what we should be doing, which is being in classrooms, being with students, making connections, building positive relationships. It's being a health contact tracer or being an educator and an instructional leader.
If, if I could just share on behalf of the nurses, as I'm in communication with them here, and I asked them if they're okay if I share. The concern that they have is that they're the primary people who get the information and start this process and also make the phone calls and notifications to the parents to explain the procedures. One of their largest concerns is that this has eclipsed any of the communication that they've had with parents. They're not functioning like school nurses. They're not the resource. One shared a story of parent had a child who was vomiting and didn't really quite know what to do and was able to talk with the school nurse and get that advice of how to treat that illness because at this point, it's hard to get into a doctor's office or get some of that. And parents just get nervous when, you know, especially young children get sick. That's the type of work that they want to do. There are students who they still have to monitor diabetes, other kind of medication that they're taking. And the contact tracing, while they'll do it, it's taking away from and increasing their stress and workload because there's a timeliness to this. You find out somebody has, has tested positive. You want to let parents know as soon as possible. It's not something that can wait and they may have children that need to be seen in their office. If, if there was anything that they would recommend, it would be just people who are immunocompromised. And unfortunately, we, as Mr. Rule shared, we can't collect that information for parents. They can offer it to us, but like any other staff member who's asked for an ADA accommodation for any series of illnesses, we, we look for documentation for that. So I, I, you know, I think there's just a concern on the part of having information about our community that really we have no right to in order to do that. And, and as Ms. Reber said, yes, it varies. We've been fortunate the past couple of days, but you never know.
I really can't add to what Ms. Reber said, other than there are days when it is all consuming. And we feel like with the lack of full information that we have at our disposal, that we're really just not wasting our time, but not being effective with the use of our time. And what we all went to school for as principals was to do exactly what Paula said, to be in classrooms, to work with kids, to work with teachers, to make school a better place. Contact tracing really doesn't help us do that.
Do I hear that you would like to eliminate the contact tracing for the fragile health students as well?
Uh, no, I, I, I wouldn't, I'm not asking for that. I'm just worried about expanding the net further. And, you know, again, I'm, I'm not sure what other context in the community would have to do that for someone else. Like if, for adults, I don't believe many employers are letting them know that they were exposed to let somebody know at home. But if we do that for, for in school, then we're kind of expanding that again. And just to answer Mr. Fetzer's, you know, question, you know, at Kelly, like, you know, first we're checking on the bus, then we're going and we're checking the cafeteria, we're checking in the classroom. I'm sometimes going down and pulling kids out to try to ask questions about who was around whom. Imagine five-year-olds trying to remember who they sat around three or four days ago. But the nurse and just the amount of time that, that she has to spend and great, like today, we didn't have to contact trace anybody. But the other day we had three in one day and we had to go back and do that. And we, we spent hours doing that. And I tried to do what I can because I only have one nurse to try to take a little off of her plate. So she can still deal with recess and everything else. And again, that's less time than I'm spending in classrooms and being able to do other things. So I, I'm not suggesting that we take away students with fragile health issues. I think we absolutely need to be careful with that. I'm just cautious about expanding it.
Thank you, guys. Like I said, I, I really hate to put you on the spot for, but for me personally, it's important to know what you guys are doing day in and day out and how much time you're dedicating to this. So, so thank you for standing up.
So Erin, are, have you withdrawn the expansion or are we, is that still what you'd like us to consider?
I'll withdraw the expansion. I think this is a real shame. I don't think it's that many people. I think there are a few families with some family members with significant health concerns. And I'm only asking for those, right? I know I said we wouldn't means test, but it is, I, I just think that, and I'm talking maybe a dozen across the whole district, but it allows them to put their kids in school in person if they can feel that they have that extra measure of protection. I'm not saying it's going to be 100 or 500. I'm talking about a few. So I, I am, I have that concern. I am sorry. I am very sorry for the families that have a person at home who has sent their child to school with the understanding that they would have some notification. I understand that may change what they do with their child. And so, but I withdraw the amendment to the motion.
In that case, I believe we need to, we're, we're essentially adding an item to the agenda if we vote on item E separately. So we need a motion to, to do that. We basically need a motion to vote on this and then we could proceed.
If we're, if we're not changing it, we don't need to anymore. We can just go back to the full plan.
Okay.
Unless you want, you want to write, okay, we can, sorry. A motion to add agenda item just part E as written of the health and safety plan to the agenda.
Don't we, we already have the motion a second. That's why we just had that discussion.
No, but we have to, we have to have a motion to actually move to voting on it.
Adding it as a separate item to the agenda.
Okay.
Vote separately on it.
We had a motion from Dr. Jablonski. Do we have a second? I'm sorry, what was the motion? To proceed to a vote on item E, just item E.
Just item E, just contact tracing is what we're voting on right now. Okay.
I'm sorry, was that a second? I can't hear you. I'm sorry. Yes. Okay. I still need a second. There is no second, then we will return to discussing the entire plan.
Second?
Seconded by Ms. Kraus. Then all in favor of the item E portion of the health and safety plan, which is the E reads contact tracing in combination with isolation and quarantine and collaboration with the state and local health departments. And then there are numerous bullet points under that, all in favor of that portion of the health and safety plan. I guess we should take this by a roll call vote. Please, Paula, everyone. Ms. Stanton? Dr. Unzogor Fisero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Ms. Haynos?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Japlan?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Lyon?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Paula. So item E of the health and safety plan on contact tracing has passed. And then we return to we return to the discussion of the rest of the plan.
Are we open to discussion now or do we need to? Okay. Um, I just want to speak because I was asked tonight why I do not think we should drop masks immediately. I'll give you a couple of reasons. One, I do think that masks have kept our school doors open. There is an elementary school six miles from our elementary school that had to shut down for a week. And on the day that they shut down, they had 25 positive cases in their school and we had four in our elementary school. I would argue that the masks made the difference there. That's my one argument. My second argument for not dropping masks immediately is that there are three districts in the state of Pennsylvania who have been told, I want to say it's been since January, but it may be December and I don't want to misspeak, so we'll call it December, who have been told by federal judges to put their mask mandates back in place. The most recent was a school district that was told just this week by a federal judge to reinplace their mask mandates. In the most recent case, the judge's ruling specifically stated that the district dropped the mask mandate without reason. Nothing had changed, they just decided it was time. Whether I agree with that or not, as a board member, I do believe I have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers. And making sure that when our masks do come off, we follow a process, I do think is important. Unfortunately, whatever the date is, it's going to be too soon for some and it's going to be too late for others. But I do think we need to go about it in a responsible manner. I also think, as was stated tonight, that with contact tracing being gone, we do need to monitor what happens. That's, you want to call it good science, good practice, whatever your word is for it, it's a good way to go about things. So I agree that in two weeks, we can discuss this again, in four weeks, we can discuss this again. But besides my personal opinions on masking, I also believe that we need to make sure we're going about it in a responsible manner. Because I don't think any of us want a federal judge telling us when we can take our masks off.
It's true that we, as a board, decided to keep masks on in December. And we saw that in December and January, into January, well into January, we were hearing from hospitals and our local healthcare providers that the situation was dire. Things are changing and I, along with everyone else, welcome that, things are changing for the better. And along with Kristin, I agree, we can continue to monitor this situation very closely and we should. But I feel it is premature to remove masks at this point in time.
I'd just like to add that something that I've said before, I've always felt like health decisions for children are best decided by their parents. I think that's exactly. For me, I feel like that's what masks are, they're a health decision and I think that's where the decision should lie. I don't, Kristin's point is very valid, we do have a fiduciary responsibility. However, I would say that I think I probably, more than anybody else in the room, have spent more time in a federal courtroom than anybody else. And I will say that I'm not terribly worried about it in this case. Decisions are made every day, sometimes they mean something, sometimes they don't. It's one of those issues you deal with when the time comes and it, there's no one decision that's made in one courtroom that necessarily applies universally, unless that courtroom happens to be in Washington DC at a certain building. But, uh, so I would just say, there are opinions all over the map, we have heard them. Everybody feels very strongly about their opinions, they have their reasons for having their opinions. Without trying to say that anybody's opinions are more important than another, I would just say that we've heard a lot of, we've heard parents on both sides of the issue, we've heard doctors on both sides of the issue, we've heard all kinds of scientists and medical people on both sides of the issue. There is an ever-evolving amount of science that seems to be available, credible science. You can go find it and choose to believe in whatever you want to believe in. But I think the most moving thing I heard tonight was a few students that came up and gave us some personal experiences about what they're going through. And it just so happens, we only heard from one side of students tonight. I don't know if there are any students who really love masks and want to come tell us to keep them on, I'm doubtful.
We did have one online comment.
Online.
Okay, I stand corrected then. At any rate, those are my two cents.
I just want to comment one thing, walking into the building tonight, I don't know if I should have my mask on or off because it's very confusing and I would agree with, I believe it was this gentleman that does COVID go away at 2:30, 2:40? Because we do have a very confusing guideline in place as it stands, in my opinion. I have to wear a mask all day at work, I hate it, it's life. It's required in my office for the Department of Health. I've had patients walk out because they won't, you know, come into a place that requires masks, I get it. But these kids, like they said, they don't understand, like they have to wear a mask at school, but then they can go to basketball in the same building with the same friends, with the same staff and don't have to wear a mask. So I ask, and I've had a few educators from our district ask, whatever we decide, make it make sense and make it fluid. So if we're going to require masks, then we need to require masks. And we need to require not cloth masks, we need to require masks that actually make a difference, in my opinion. We need to make sure that kids are educated on how to wear them, parents are educated on how to wear them. Because I also guarantee that there's parents that stood up tonight and said, kids don't mind wearing masks. I, I would say I disagree because they might say they don't mind wearing masks, but when they're at school, I guarantee they mind wearing masks, especially all day. And ask a teacher how many times they have to tell my kid to wear the mask correctly. I know they know how to wear it correctly, I mean, I tell them to wear it correctly, but again, kids are kids and they're gonna, they're gonna, you know, just by nature, it's going to fall down on them. I'm an eye care professional, I'm worried about children's sight and the way that they're not wearing their glasses because their glasses fog up. Is that a reason not to wear a mask? No, maybe, I don't know. Again, I just want a clear rule of either we are a district that masks all the time. Anyone that comes through the doors, everyone masked, there's no question asked, or we're not. And it's up to the discretion of the parent, the student, the families. And I agree with Cory, I think it's a family.
I forgot to add, by the way, that I would be in favor of making masks optional tonight.
I'd like to respond to one of the things that Dr. Unser Fisero said, which is, which is an issue that has come up before, which has to do with the question of consistency. I think there's a very important distinction that's getting lost between the school day and the after-school hours in that children are required by law to attend school during the day. No child is required to be in the building after school hours. The things that they do in that time are very important and for many kids are the most important things they do in this building. And I don't discount that, but it remains the case that those are optional. Whereas being in school between 7:30 and 2:40, later than that, if you're in a different building, is not optional. And so what is being identified as an inconsistency in the plan has to do with the different legal situations of the time that's spent in the building during the day versus the time that's spent in the building after the end of the school day. So I disagree that there's an inconsistency there.
The school still has control over what happens after school. The school is still in charge of sporting events, regardless of whether it's a choice or not. If, if we know that students are going to harm themselves and we say, well, it's their choice, we're not going to care. If we truly care, we would be requiring masks at any time in the school building and, you know, anytime that we have supervision, we have supervision at sporting events, at musicals, even though it's a choice, even though it's an extracurricular, that still falls under the school purview. So if we truly care, then we should be going to universal masking all the time. I heard last meeting that it was too difficult and I would come back to saying, if we care, then it's not too difficult. But if we're choosing to mask sometimes and not other times because it's too difficult, then that's on us that we're not caring. So we either need to decide, are we going to do universal masking all the time? Or are we going to do optional masking all the time? Splitting it up throughout the day, wrestlers can practically hug each other for 15 minutes during a match, but yet they. I don't want to be wrestler, so I apologize if there's any in the room or watching. But they can be, you know, side by side, breathing heavily for each other, you know, on each other for an extended period, but yet we're telling them to mask during the day. We're sending very mixed signals and we need to make up our mind what, what we're going to do, in my opinion.
I don't, I don't want to wear these. You know, I'm, I get, I get looks when I go in giant with a mask on. That shouldn't happen. And I'm being careful because of my mom, right? And I'm also being careful because we're asking our kids to be careful. And sure, when I went for takeout the other night and had to sit and wait for my takeout, I did, I took my mask off to drink my beverage. But I think we're being a little picky on about how we're caring for these kids and how we're trying to put things in place that probably aren't going to make, as everyone said, it's not going to make everybody over here happy and it's not going to make everybody over here happy. We're trying to do what apparently our national government can't do, find the moderate middle. We're trying to find where it fits. And for me, that's with a plan that moves us towards getting rid of the mask. Right now, we're talking about, it's, you know, as soon as we can get the little ones and then a little bit after that so that they can get vaccinated. But if we, if our infection rate drops and our vaccination rate goes up, that could happen sooner. We do have an off-ramp. We are doing this with diligence and absolute thoughtfulness and care. And anyone who doesn't think that we're doing that, I, I don't know what to tell you.
I'll, I'll echo what Mary Ann just shared, there is an off-ramp and it's not very far from now. And as I think has come across, it's going to be too soon for some and it will be too late for others. But I like the idea of revisiting the plan with frequency so that we can take into account local conditions. And also because I, we, we can take the two weeks until the next meeting, for example, to see if the contact tracing burden is significantly less and that's helping everyone and see how things go and how our COVID dashboard pans out. So I would be in favor of revisiting the plan at the February 24th meeting, if people were amenable to that. I'm probably not going to make any other motions tonight, so that's, that's it.
So I think if our board is not willing to take a stance on universal masking, whether you're on school premises regardless of the hour, then we should take a stance to all optional masking. Because again, it's inconsistent to the student. And I'm not even necessarily advocating for optional masking, I'm advocating for consistency. And, and as, as I've stated, I know I'm being a broken record meeting after meeting now. To me, it's inconsistent, it's either one or the other. And if our board can't take that universal stance that we don't want to deal with the repercussions or we don't have the manpower or that it's too difficult or any of the other reasons that I'm being told that we're not doing them, then, then we're not fully protecting our students. So why are we going to the length of doing it during the school day?
I would like to suggest then that in the bullet point at the top of page six, under item A, we changed the word should to must. So it will read masking is recommended for all individuals attending meetings, events and activities that occur after students are dismissed from school. Students and staff must observe the masking recommendation. We have no authority over the public in this building, other than they have to follow the law. But we do have authority over the students. So if we change that word to must, that will go, I admit, not all the way, but a long way towards addressing the inconsistency that Mr. Fetzer and others have identified.
Is this what we really want?
It seems like it's what Mr. Fetzer's asking for.
I'm asking for consistency, so you know, I would actually then go the opposite way and say if, if we're not, if we don't want to protect our students all the time, then why are we trying to pretend that we're doing it during the school day?
Jordan, with all due respect, it is insulting for you to say that we do not want anything but the best for every student in this building. So if you could alter your language a little bit as to not imply that those of us who send our children into these buildings don't want the best for every single student here, this is super personal for a lot of us that have kids in this school. And I understand you're passionate about things, but saying and implying that our believing, you know, my belief that masking has kept the doors open means that I don't care about the students of our school is, is inaccurate and offensive to me.
So are you okay with taking the masks off after, after class ends for extracurriculars and co-curriculars? You're okay with that? That's all, all I'm offering is just the question for all of us board members to really think through. Is this logical? And maybe it is, and that's okay, then we'll, then we can move to vote. That's all I'm asking is that, is this logical? You require it during the school day, the bell rings, students walk out, they come back into the buildings and they have the choice then.
The requirement goes with the requirement and the option goes with the option. You are required to be in the school during the school day unless you're doing e-school. Otherwise, you are a truant. You have the option to participate in extracurriculars and that is when the mask becomes optional. Not because I would choose that, but because that is the best compromise we have right now. So I would just encourage us to see how what we have proposed here plays out and revisit this at the February 24th meeting.
Is there further discussion? I move to pull the masking option and vote on it separately.
Sorry, can you repeat that?
I move to take the bullet point A and vote on it separately. So nothing else in the plan has changed? We can, that, but I'm not, okay. Okay, we already voted on the point, sorry. Is there further discussion? Then we're ready to vote, we don't need to vote.
What are we voting on?
What are we voting on?
Fair question. We are voting on the, the, we already voted on item E, we are now voting on the rest of the plan.
As it's written.
As recommended.
I, I would motion that there is some language that we will revisit this. If it is accepted as it stands, where masking is removed on the 28th?
Six weeks after the vaccine is approved for the youngest children, which may be around. Is how it's written.
Okay.
Right now, in this, in this plan, it says that we will return to the health and safety plan at the March 10th meeting. Dr. Jablonski suggested that we return to it at the February 24th meeting. I assume there is no objection to that change.
That's what I would have motioned.
So if we vote on the plan as it is, we're voting on it with this, with that one change that instead of returning to the plan in one month, we will return to it in two weeks.
I think I'll second Ms. Kraus's, is that, is that the motion you're making there, Kristin?
Yes.
All right, I'll second that.
Do we have the option of returning anytime we want to?
We do have the option, but we're promising to return to. We do have the option, but we're promising to return to it on this one. All right, if there is no further discussion, we'll take a roll call vote on the plan as written, with the exception of returning to it on the 24th instead of March 10.
Dr. Unzeker Ficaro?
No.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
No.
Ms. Hanos?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
No.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Crowe?
Yes.
Ms. Lyon?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Thank you. We have a full agenda with a lot more on it. We're going to take a five minute break. You folks are all totally welcome to stay, but you are also welcome to leave if you would like.
Really?
Really.
Board members and administrators, as we resume our discussions, I would ask that you please pull your microphones closer to you and please speak directly into them so the folks here and at home can hear you. Thank you.
Even me?
Even you.
Wow.
Especially you, Mrs. Moser. Thank you.
No, yeah. Yeah, that's why I was like, I'm going to get right up to this thing. I don't know. Don, are you staying up there? Don?
Yes.
Are you staying up there?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm here for the party.
Oh, yeah. Which one? All right, we shall reconvene. The next item on the agenda is the 2022-23 Sun Tech Institute Proposed Operating Budget. We had a proposal from Ms. Hane at our last meeting. Dr. Bod, do you have anything to add?
Um, no, nothing has changed with this proposal. This is in order to build out a space within the school in order to have the electronics and mechatronics program. Mecatronics, the program that will be in place and will eventually expand it to electronics as well. As identified needs by community leaders, the Tuscon Hannah Valley Chamber of Commerce, many conversations we've been having regarding jobs that are available in the area with the goal of keeping kids in the valley area.
Is there a motion to approve?
No, moved.
Moved by Mr. Fetzer?
Second.
Uh, second by, sorry, who was it?
Mrs. Stanton.
Discussion? I, I had a question for you, John. This does represent an increase, a pretty significant increase in our contribution. Did, did you factor that? Has that been factored into the budget?
Um, it has been added in and it has been offset by some recalculations in some of our earned income tax revenue. So yes, it is a large increase more than what we normally see, but it has been offset by an estimated increase in revenue.
Okay, thank you. Are there other questions or any further discussion?
John, when you say it was offset, is that, it's been offset since we've seen numbers or it was offset? In other words, was it factored in in the last time we saw a budget projection?
The numbers are about the same as they were last time because when I received these Sun Tech budget numbers, it was also the time I reviewed other calculations and they kind of offset each other. So we're still where we are, where we were before. Does that make sense?
I believe so. So, so basically if we didn't have the increase, we'd be in a better position than we were before.
Yes.
And, uh, Dr. Bauer, Mr. Fetzer, help me with this. Of the five standing districts, three have to pass the budget. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Any other discussion?
To my knowledge, I'm not sure, Virginia did ask me earlier, just for the rest of the board, I'm not sure if any other districts have voted on it. They, so.
I think ours is the lowest contribution, so I might imagine some of them will be having conversations. I don't know. Okay, roll call vote, please Paula.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Ms. Hanos?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Ms. Crowe?
Yes.
Ms. Lyon?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unzeker Ficaro?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up is the 22-23 preliminary general fund budget. To you, John.
Uh, yes, this is the general fund budget that we saw last time and what we've seen so far and has been advertised. We do have a significant deficit, but we are required to report this to the state. And we will continue to work as we always do to close that budget deficit gap by the time we get to the final, final budget in June. So I would ask that you approve this this evening and we'll get back to work scrubbing those numbers.
Thanks, John. Is there a motion to approve the preliminary general fund budget?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Hanos, a second.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Stanton, discussion? I'll just reiterate for the folks listening at home what Mr., Dr. Fairchild just said, which is that we, we have multiple budget reports. The final budget isn't approved until June. So there is opportunity for us to reconcile the numbers and Dr. Fairchild generally does magical things. So we look forward to that. There's no discussion, then a roll call vote, please Paula.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Ms. Hanos?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
No.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Crowe?
Yes.
Ms. Lyon?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unzeker Ficaro?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up is the 22-23 district calendar. We had a look at that last time. We've now had a chance to study it. Comments, Dr. Bauer?
No, just a couple editing errors that were on there from before. So the yellow is teacher in service. The box is the end mark through a white. Pretty much it. We would start, and again, the reason why we're starting at this later week time for instruction for the HVAC just buys a little time in case that runs over, gets us out.
And could I ask a question?
Uh, I think we need to move to pass it first. So is there a motion?
Yes.
I'm second.
Moved by Ms. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Fetzer. Go ahead, Mary Ann, with your question.
I just wanted to point out for, because I have people who come up to me and ask about graduation all the time and we, why we never have it on the calendar. So I just wondered if you could address that, just for public.
One of the things that we can do, we can always set graduation. The only, there are exceptions for grad, graduation practice and certain activities. The only penalty to the district is the average daily membership that would be deducted by the seniors. And many districts do that where they set a date and they just say, that's okay, they're ready to go.
Right. Got it. Thanks.
I just had one question and I intended to check it myself, but I didn't. Um, the two times that there's like a Wednesday, uh, there's middle of the week days off, I assume that's election day and primary day, correct? Like it's not.
Election day is a day off.
Right. And then there was a later one as well, I believe, um, later in the year, like in the spring sometime.
There's one March 20.
That was also like in the middle of the week like that?
Early, there's a March 8th that said, looks like a.
March 8th is a day off.
Yeah, and just curious, as a parent, having it in the middle of the week like that, that's, is there a reason for that or?
It, it's just.
The way it falls.
It's breaking up the month art.
Okay.
Yeah. And.
Okay.
I have a question about the staggered starts. Have we seen a difference over the last few years? Cause it seemed like that was started because of COVID and not having the, like open houses or visitation and then it's kind of just stopped. Has that seemed to really been beneficial to have? That because it is a struggle on parents.
Yeah, it, it also allows us to take one of the in-service days and move it into the calendar year because we don't have to have the two at the beginning of the year because some teachers have students, others don't. It's been very well received from the staff. I know for some parents, it might be a little bit of a challenge if they have multiple kids and trying to navigate that week. But with the younger kids, our SAC is open and we can always be flexible if parents need childcare assistance with that.
And there's no concerns that SAC won't be open for, obviously, the first stage. Remind.
Any further discussion on the?
Sorry, I don't mean to be, but is there a way to move that middle of the day to a Monday or a Friday or is it a week? Could. I mean, I, we don't. Again, I, I don't want to be the person that's like, we don't do it that way here, because, you know. But that as a, as a parent, a middle of the week off is a little tricky sometimes. So I mean, if there's a, like a solid reason for it, great.
We already have a provision of and, and because they would want to play a game.
Okay.
But we're working very hard.
Okay. Gotcha.
So we certainly, I, I don't have a problem. I don't know if any moves to the 10th. What I would recommend is that enable it every back.
Okay. And again, I don't, like I said.
We all have to be in agreement for that change. If there's anybody that, I guess, vote for that.
If it, if it seems, I mean, if, if that is an issue that people take personal days on teacher in-service days, I completely, that's a, that's a reasonable argument for me to put it in the middle of the week. So I'm, I'm fine with that being the reason. So.
So we'll vote on it as it is?
Yeah.
Let's just go down there.
Okay, uh, can that be, I think that could. Yeah. So all in favor of the calendar as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the next item is the graduation project approval. You will remember that at our last meeting, we saw a presentation from Ally Herman Comas and Rudy Christiansen-Garal. Um, and that is now in front of us for approval, their motion to approve the, that joint graduation project.
So moved.
By Ms. Hanos, there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Stanton, any discussion? Uh, I think this does need to be a roll call vote, Paula.
Ms. Hanos?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Ms. Crowe?
Yes.
Ms. Lyon?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unzeker Ficaro?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
I abstain as one of them is my child.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Motion?
Thank you. We move on then to new business and the first item is the referendum exceptions for 22-23. Don?
Uh, yes, I would ask the board to authorize the administration, as you have done in many years in the past, to advertise and apply for referendum exceptions for the 22-23 budget year. Although we do apply for them, we have yet to use them, but like many insurance policies, it's good to have it and not need it. So I would ask that you authorize us to do that this evening.
Our motion to approve the referendum exceptions? So moved. Moved by Dr. Unzeker Ficaro, a second. Seconded by Mr. Heath, any discussion? Roll call vote, please Paula.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Ms. Crowe?
Yes.
Ms. Lyon?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unzeker Ficaro?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Ms. Hane?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up is the enrollment of student 2022A in the Mifflinburg Agriculture Program. Dr. Bauer?
This student and the other student are also, they're both applying to participate in this program. It's a class. We've, if it's done. Right?
Yes.
Both students, they're in good standing. This is difficult.
Our motion to approve the, the enrollment for the first of these students?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Fetzer, seconded by Ms. Stanton, any discussion? Roll call vote.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Crowe?
Yes.
Ms. Lyon?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unzeker Ficaro?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Ms. Hanos?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. And then we have another student, student 2022B, same deal. Their motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Heath, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Fetzer, any discussion? Roll call vote, Paula.
Mrs. Crowe?
Yes.
Ms. Lyon?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unzeker Ficaro?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Ms. Haynos?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Bonz?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up is the student tuition waiver. Dr. Baugh?
This student is asking for tuition waiver to remain in our district. Leave this at Sun Tech.
Sun Tech senior.
And is also.
Senior looking to finish her program.
Their motion to approve?
So moved.
Uh, moved by Ms. Stanton?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Fetzer, any discussion? I guess that we can take that by voice vote. Yeah? Yeah, okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, I'm being corrected and we do need to take that by a roll call vote.
Positive.
No, let's.
It's in the policy that we grant.
So we don't, no, okay, okay. I am being uncorrected.
We aren't, it's like a sixth grader free.
Okay. Uh, the next item is the sports, support staff wage adjustment and starting wages. Dr. Baugh?
Um, the proposal here is for an adjustment to our support staff wages to be more aligned with market.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Dr. Jawanski, seconded by Ms. Haynos, question? All right, roll call vote, please Paula.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unzicker Ficero?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Ms. Haynos?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Bonz?
Yes.
Ms. Crowe?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Uh, the whiteboard replacement at the middle school, Dr. Baugh?
So our whiteboards at the middle school are not of the kind of quality to contain a lot of writing and erasing and that they get very gray, very hard for kids to see, um, to clean them. So we're proposing to erase, um, replace all of the whiteboards.
Your motion?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Jawanski, a second.
Second.
Seconded by, by Ms. Haynos, uh, Ms. Ms. Lyons, thank you. Any discussion?
Would this by any chance be eligible for some of our one-time funding?
If kids can't see the board, I think probably improvements in.
Just a. Just a thought.
Any other discussion? This isn't, this isn't actually replacing the whole board, it's the, just resurfacing it, right?
It is, um.
I don't know that much about the boards, I apologize.
Uh, Mr. Gallegos is up here and he says it is a resurfacing, yeah. Not a full replacement.
So the boards stay, we resurface?
The white film that's on that's resurfaced, the actual board is screwed up.
Yep, got it. Thanks.
It, it's another board that just goes on top of the existing whiteboards with the new surface.
Any other questions or discussion? Roll call vote, please Paula.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Unzicker Ficero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Ms. Haynos?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Bonz?
Yes.
Ms. Crowe?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next is the high school baseball field water runoff project with the review, bid review and intent to award. Dr. Baugh?
Um, so this is the bid that we've talked about before, an information item to remediate the stormwater drainage around the base.
And we're being asked to consider the, the award, the.
Columbia Escalating who came in at the lowest possible.
Is there a motion to?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Jawanski, second? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Heath, question?
Can this be the last time we talk about the runoff from the high school baseball fields?
Seriously.
We have to talk about it one more time to actually vote on the contract at the next meeting and then it'll be done.
Thank you, Dr. Fairchild.
Roll call vote.
I'm sorry, Dr. Unzicker Ficero, I didn't hear you.
I said, have it in writing that it'll be the last time. Sorry.
Send it to us in a change order. Those are more entertaining.
No change orders.
Roll call vote, please Paula.
Dr. Unzicker Ficero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Ms. Haynos?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Bonz?
Yes.
Ms. Crowe?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Uh, that brings us to new business and the first item is the CSIU proposed general budget for 22-23.
So there is a document here that gives an overview of the budget. This is really to sustain the current programs that we're purchasing, we're currently purchasing and would anticipate to continue to purchase from the CSIU. They receive revenue from the Department of Education and the state budget, but member district are, participate at will in the programs and this is what's anticipated. We don't see anything really changing. It's at $690 and $145.
No, we don't.
It's an executive.
That's the entire budget.
We're not logged in that way.
Ooh, okay.
But we're not being asked to vote on it now.
No, we're being asked to do 36,233. And if we don't use those services.
Right, it's only through purchase services.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
And just as a reminder to everyone, because this, I'm reading directly from this, because the IU takes no state subsidy deductions from member districts, the required budget process does not have as much impact on our district as it has on those in IUs that have money deducted from their state subsidy to fund their IU programs. That makes us very different than other IUs in Pennsylvania. We're very fortunate.
So this will appear on the next agenda as a voting item. Are there any other questions about it at this time or comments? Okay, then, uh, next is the board president's report, which I will forego in the interest of time. Dr. Baugh, superintendent's report?
We're go.
Uh, any board liaison or committee reports?
Uh, I just, the Labor Relations Committee met last week to discuss issues that everybody's already aware of.
Thanks.
The equity inclusion fee minutes are. And as well as the education.
Thank you. Anybody else? Hey, then I will entertain a motion to pass the consent agenda with the revised personnel report.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Jawanski, seconded by Ms. Stanton. Any question or any item anyone wants held out? Uh, roll call vote, please Paula.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Ms. Haynos?
Yes.
Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Bonz?
Yes.
Ms. Crowe?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Eric, thank you. And that brings us to directors' comments, and I'll start all the way down there with you, Ms. Lyons.
Um, I have no comments. Glad we're all here.
Thanks for everyone's time and commitment to the district.
I got nothing.
Kara?
I'm gonna.
Erin?
What's happening tonight?
Four score and seven years ago. I have nothing.
All right, I also will just, again, thank the public for their participation in this civic process and look forward to doing it again at our next meeting. Um, we now turn to citizens' comments to the board on non-agenda items. Do we have any online?
I have two additional comments that have been received since earlier. The first one is from Katie Houts. Will you please consider allowing students to choose whether or not they want to wear a mask? If people feel safer wearing a mask, then they are free to do that. We should be free to choose no matter vaccination status because all people are getting and spreading COVID. The masks we wear are, the masks we are wearing are not proven effective and kids aren't wearing them properly most of the time anyway. School feels gloomy because you can't see people's expressions. We are tired of wearing masks. It's been long enough and it's time to put an end to it. And then, uh, the last comment is from Julian Alabakoff. I highly encourage the removal of the mask mandate as well as the contact tracing policy. And that's it for online comments.
All right, are there comments from the folks in the room? All right, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second. Are we having a?